This regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education called to order. Present we have Ms. Pitco, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Dr. Jones, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Maxon Canelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Solari, our student representatives for Fairfield Ward and Fairfield Lelo, Ms. Solari, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Coolidge, and Mr. Holtz. Can I ask you all please to rise for the pledge? And Mr. Peterson, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the student reports, I have one change to the agenda. Mr. Hatzis had a family commitment, so he's going to be a little late. So I was wondering if I could have a motion to change the order of agenda to move the presentation of the alumni survey results to swap it with the facilities update. So move it to...
Point of order, Ms. Chair? Is it the motion, we just table it and then we take it off the table when it gets here? Is that the correct motion? I know there's one that means we put it on the table and we can take it off during the same meeting.
I know in the past we've just made a motion to switch the order.
I think in the past we've just said unanimous consent and when nobody objects, it's so ordered.
Sue DeSantis for the board for unanimous consent.
Ms. Pitco's gonna make the motion. Ms. Lieber's gonna second. So all in favor? No? Consent? Unanimous? Okay, so moving on to the student reports. I think that we started first last time. Where did Lelo, do you remember?
I didn't read it.
All right, so we're gonna start with Fairfield Ward.
First off, we wanted to say that Best Buddies hosted their annual Friendsgiving for their chapter and also surrounding chapters in the state. For any of you that don't know, Best Buddies is a club where students are matched with others who have special needs and they're able to develop a very connected one-to-one relationship throughout the year and attend different events. We also completed all fall drama. It was a three sisters in the black box theater with amazing performances and great crowds. And we offer our huge congratulations and recognition to Mr. Fratowoli for his amazing efforts and the cast and crew as well. And we also hosted our annual Ward-Lelo Thanksgiving game, which was held on the Wednesday before because of extreme cold weather. Lelo ended up winning by one point, so we offer our congratulations to Lelo. But there is enthusiastic crowds and amazing spirit from both sides, so it was a very fun event.
Our annual Carol Ann student concert is coming to fruition soon, as we have our student performances on Friday where we will get to witness their excellent concert. And community concerts will be on Tuesday, December 18th. And we are also hosting a show for our incoming eighth graders on December 19th. Back to the topic of sports, our Ward's esports team made it to third place in the playoffs for Fairfield County. And last Wednesday, Mrs. Murphy, one of our main office secretaries, gave a heartfelt tribute to George H.W. Bush, recounting a very touching story of her brother, one of H.W. Bush's Secret Service agents, and how he was just touched by the immense generosity of George H.W. Bush to his Secret Service agents during his last few months being alive. Then it was followed by a moment of silence, as we all express our condolences for the Bush family and their loss. And that about concludes our report on Ward. Actually, we do have our public service announcement. Our Barlow's Restaurant, which is student-run, is open to the public every Thursday and Friday from 10:50 a.m. to 11:50 a.m., and orders can be placed on Tuesday before. And Barlow's also offers catering opportunities.
Thank you. Moving on.
Okay. And for Lelo, the Red Cross Club run a blood drive, which we collected 38 units of blood, which will be able to save around 114 lives in the future. Also, the Falcon footprint campaign has been started, which is launching a set of civic and social expectations for students. It encourages them to realize their impact on their school community and the surrounding community and be active and responsible citizens. Mr. Hatzis has suggested that most of the homerooms come up with some sort of unique philanthropy project to carry out through the rest of the year to help with the Falcon footprint. And then St. Vincent's Smoke Stoppers returned to speak to our students this month, which was a presentation on the dangers of vaping, smoking, et cetera, and showed the effects of all of these things on the human body. And then lastly, the International Save a Life Tour was at Lelo to present on the dangers of distracted driving. So it consisted of a video and two simulators where students could practice like texting and driving and see the dangers of distracted driving.
In addition, back to the topic of sports, Lelo is very proud of all of the fall sports teams for having completed their seasons. A big congratulations goes to the FLHS football team and Coach Ross. It was an exciting season that finished seven to three, with Lelo beating Ward at the annual Lelo versus Ward Thanksgiving football game, 34 to 33. The Lelo Boys soccer team went to the state tournament and will be honored with a banner in the Lelo gym. Congrats to the girls volleyball team for also making it to states. Fran Conzila and her drama students did an amazing job this month with three performances of the fall play, A Wilder Time, consisting of two one-acts, The Long Christmas Dinner and Pullman Car Hiwatha by Thorn Wilder. Thank you, Fran, for a fun night at the theater. We look forward to the next musical in the spring. In addition, on Wednesday, November 21st, FLHS held Alumni Day. The school welcomes back recent graduates for a visit with former teachers and students. Approximately 230 alumni from the classes of 2014 to 2018 attended this celebration. It's always nice to welcome back a Falcon.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Ms. Maxon Canelli?
A couple of questions, both for Lelo and Ward. Do you know are alumni ever invited back for those Carol Ann and Candlelight? Do they ever have an opportunity? I assume it would be on, even if they could, it would be on a space-available basis. But are they allowed to go during the day school performances or only at night?
In my experience, I believe that most alumni would be attending the community session with the rest of parents and relatives viewing the Carol Ann performance, as well as any Fairfield citizen who wants to see an amazing performance.
If they can get tickets?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then my second question had been about the Barlow Restaurant. So that's catering, and that would be for any community member who wanted to place an order, and that could be just for weekdays, that those meals could be arranged?
Yes, I do believe so. If you want all the information regarding Barlow's Restaurant, it is on our website, on the Fairfield Public Schools website.
Okay. I know I did take a look at the lunch prices, and they are crazy reasonable, but just an interesting opportunity, both for the kids to deliver and for the community to come into the schools. But thank you.
Any other questions? To our seniors, good luck to you. For those that are applying to college, I know that either January deadline's passing, and good luck if anyone applied early decision or early action. And you are free to join-stay if you'd like, or take your leave whenever you want. Thank you. Have a very happy holiday. Okay, on to public comment. Any members of the public? Please come up, state your name and your address. We limit public comment to agenda items, and the time is three minutes.
Hello. My name is Matthew Hallick. I live at 6 Somerville Street in Fairfield. I just saw on the agenda about the ECC and everything you're doing, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I know that's a big elephant you gotta wrestle there. I was just wondering about McKinley, because I thought you could maybe move ECC to McKinley, take over like half of that, and then bus the kids there, wherever you want in town, and solve like the racial imbalance problem too.
We'll go ahead and get started. Tony Jones, School Superintendent, and with me is Mr. Mancusi, our Executive Director
Maybe you can kill two birds with one stone. That was it.
of Special Education.
Thank you.
As you know, we've been looking at the Early Childhood Center, trying to figure out what
Any other members of the public?
we are going to do for September.
Okay, seeing none, we are now gonna move on to the facilities update.
So we're gonna present to you tonight some of the work that has been done over the last few months.
Just a second, we'll switch it.
First of all, just as a reminder, because we always assume there's somebody watching Yeah. Facilities update is the ECC. or in the audience that may not realize why we're even talking about the ECC, our numbers have been growing exponentially this year.
I flipped it.
That number of 165, we expect that number could be larger again next year. So it's just showing you that trend over the 10 years.
Christine, you might wanna move your chair in case the...
When you talk about the current ECC school site, one of the questions that, you know, we've had is, well, can we take over the black box theater?
Nick, can you grab the, push the microphones down?
And I just think it's important for people to see, the black box theater is right in
Yeah.
here. This area that says six classrooms is the whole ECC. So even though it has a name like theater, which most people think sounds like a big space, it actually is not a very big space. One of the questions we've also been asked, just in the community in general, is, could you go just behind the actual ECC? And it's important to note, you had the whole automotive program behind the ECC, which is a very, very difficult program to move in the high school. The other thing we looked at is, could you actually go down the hall and recapture some space back behind the ECC? But in yellow, you'll note that over for Ward numbers, the building is built for 1400, they're at 1479 right now. So it's a building that really doesn't have five classrooms in order to give to another program. And then around the ECC, of course, is the parking that is needed for all of the fields that exist in that area as well. So we really are trying to focus tonight on short-term versus long-term, and I think that it's the long-term that tends to muddy the water and cause probably more conversation. The reality is, we need a short-term solution for the fall. We need it for September of 2019. We want a space that will accommodate up to five classrooms. We're anticipating four in the fall. And what we've done is we've applied a rubric to determine what is the feasibility of a site. So we've looked at the ADA access. Does it have mechanical means of fresh air, HVAC? Does it already have an early childhood playground? Is it move-in ready, or is there a cost to move in? What are the restroom facilities? What is the just building space in general? Does it have adequate space to give up five classrooms? Does it have a unique program in the building already? And where generally is it located in the district? And does it have parking for staff? So the long-term solutions, we haven't ignored those. We know that that's still really important to the community. So we have done homework there, just so that we're well-informed. We've looked at expanding ECC. We do not believe there is adequate space there. And again, that has to do with the automotive program, size of the high school, there's just not land there. We've also looked, people have said, well, what would it take to build new? And again, this is just trying to answer the question for the community. If we took the actual ECC space at 12,573 square feet, and you added those five classrooms at 750 square feet, which is pretty typical, you'd probably want another 200 square feet of small space. So you'd be looking for something that would be 16,000, just over 16,000 square feet, if you were going to build something long-term. And again, that's just a very cursory look, so people in the community know we've talked about it. What if we were going to add to a project like Mill Hill? And Mill Hill is just one of our buildings that will be going under renovation. We also have Dwight, you know, we will have Jennings. What would that look like? So we took the existing Mill Hill actual square footage for a 504 and said, what if you made Mill Hill the same square footage for 504, but you only put 441 students in there? How much square footage is left over? Then what would you actually need to add on to that in order to have an ECC at that site? And you would need an additional about 8,600 square feet. So that just gives you an idea long-term in calculating what kind of square footage it would take. And then also, community partners like universities. We are doing those reach-out, and community reach-out on that issue as well. But again, those are long-term. They need much, much more conversation from the board. We're really talking about the left-hand side, which is short-term. How are we gonna solve the issue of overcrowding for September? We've looked at some options in town for short-term. Operation Hope was recommended, that we look at that building located right next to the fire, next to the police station. It is too small. It's only 9,000 square feet. It also needs extensive, extensive repair. We talked about Oldfield School. It is a town-owned property. There are tenants in the building, they are under contract, so that's not a building short-term in September that could be under consideration. We've looked at Holy Family, that is owned by a church. There are tenants in that building. But we've also looked at things, does it meet that rubric for the HVAC? Does it have adequate play space right now? And we don't own that, we wouldn't own that building if we went into it in September. So once we looked at those, we then went into, let's look at our own school sites. Let's look at the buildings that do have adequate space. Let's look at the buildings that do not require any redistricting to make space for August of 2019, September, August. Does it meet the rubric criteria that I just shared? And we're not overloading any one particular building with unique programming. So once we went through that and we evaluated all 11 sites, these are the five schools that we have really focused on. And again, when you look at those, they're the renovated buildings, with the exception of North Stratfield. North Stratfield is a great building in that it is just the layout of the building. But these are some of the challenges that we saw with some of the buildings. For McKinley, it's just space challenges. What can we actually say over the next two, three short-term years that we would have adequate space? McKinley's enrollment changes a little bit from year to year. We've had as high as five kindergarten classrooms there just two years ago. At Stratfield, we have a program now, so we know how that building functions. Burr has, already has a unique program. There are some space challenges with Burr, because it's a multi-level building. You have to be able to look at a building and moving other classrooms around. So logistically, it's a little tougher. Holland Hill, because it will open in the fall, will, it could have space, newly renovated, it has, it meets most of the criteria, other than really a playground. The challenge at Holland Hill is, in September, their staff will be going through the third move as an elementary staff because of the construction. And as you know, we're opening, a delayed opening we just announced for them, the first day we come back from January. It'll be another huge move in September. And their building, we feel like, really just needs to gel and be an elementary K5 building. And we met with all of the principals to get their input on these solutions as well. Also, at North Stratfield, we don't have fresh air, air conditioning. There are some split units. We could put in split units in some of the rooms where we don't have air conditioning. We would not have fresh air. We do think when we have buildings that have fresh air and air conditioning for special needs, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, we should target those buildings first. The other aspect of that is with the split air unit, when you think of the issue that we had with Dwight this year, that was really caused by a split unit, because you don't have the same control that you do on your other, in your other buildings. Then looking at play equipment and logistics. By the time we have gone through all of our elementaries, we're pretty much back where we were last year when we started evaluating the buildings. And at Stratfield, Stratfield does have the space to accommodate, and it meets all of the aspects of the rubric. And currently, we already have two early childhood classrooms there that are functioning very well. So we understand the space. One of the changes we'd make at Stratfield, and again, we're working with Liz, the principal there, Ms. McGoye, where could we have OTPT? Right now, it's on the second floor. We'd like to move that down to the first floor. But Stratfield right now is definitely the building that meets the criteria from all of our buildings. This kind of alludes to the question, the gentleman who spoke in public comment, our only public comment tonight. We've had this question a lot around town, is that, is there a building, an elementary site, that we could actually move 10 or 11 classrooms in? Do any of our buildings have that for September? And the answer to that is no. We don't have any buildings that can accommodate September of 2019 to move 10 or 11 classrooms without huge upheaval or, you know, doing some sort of redistricting. And we did apply the numbers to really look at, what is that, what would that mean if you looked at Stratfield, if you looked at all five of those buildings that were up there? And so we ran the racial imbalance number at McKinley, because we knew somebody was going to ask that. McKinley balance, as of right now, is at 29.25. If we took the current, all children who are in preschool, it would bring that building down to 22.1%. So yes, it does bring them down below the threshold, but that's still what you would consider impending. So the board would need some long-term thought on that, not a solution you would be thinking about for September of 2019. So some of the changes that we will see in September is, having two sites would mean that, if we have a Stratfield site and our site at Ward, we do want all of our pre-K on the same schedule. We have had three different pre-K programs, three different schedules, and we do think it has impacted the people who want to enroll for typical peers, because when you don't have a five-day program, they haven't had that option. It will, both of the programs, it's important that they're very equal, the PE aspect, music aspect at both sites. Right now, at Stratfield, they have music, they don't at the ECC at Ward, but again, we want to equalize those going into the fall. We would look at, for both of these buildings, enrollment by feeder pattern. And that's kind of the big, big picture by feeder pattern. There are always gonna be unique circumstances. For instance, at the ECC Ward, who would follow the Lelo High School pattern, the CLC students would be at that site, just like we have three sites that we utilize across the district for our K5 buildings. So currently, going into the fall, what we are looking at doing, unless the board wants to talk about this at greater length on those other five school sites, we can answer any questions you have about the rubric aspect, why we've ended up with Stratfield as where we would intend to actually move our other pre-K program, our other classes. This is what we would be intending to do in September.
Lights on?
Yep. We can move back for questions.
Do you wanna stay here? Actually, just in case someone sees you. Lose that hand. Opening up to the floor for questions? Ms. Pitco?
I apologize. It's been many months since I've been in Stratfield, so I have a couple of questions. It's multiple floors, correct?
It is, but the early childhood would be on the first floor, which is where they are now.
And they have access to a playground from the first floor?
They have actually stairs to the playground, and they also have an elevator that goes down for, if a student doesn't, cannot use the stairs.
Is the space in the playground ADA compliant?
I believe so, yes.
And that's what the current ECC classroom was using?
It depends when you saw the playground. When we started the year, they had literally little tykes, temporary. The playground didn't go, it didn't actually get fully installed. Do you remember, Mr. Mancusi? Probably October.
There was a delay in the use of that playground when school first opened. It is now operational, yes.
I guess my concern is that some of the students that go to the ECC have physical challenges. So to take a stairs to a playground to say to do physical therapy might not be ideal for them.
Well, and I think that's why, when I talk about unique circumstances, you know, using the feeder pattern, we will have ECC Ward and we'll have ECC at Stratfield. If there is a unique need, and especially with a CLC student, they would automatically go to ECC Ward. But if you have a student who has a unique need, and we felt like the playground was gonna be a challenge, they would probably roster, Kristen would roster them to go to ECC Ward, if she felt like that's where the best placement was.
That's it? I have a couple. Mr. Peterson? Followed by Ms. Jacobson.
A few things. I can be brief. I kinda wanted to mention first that on your map of the ECC school site, there is a big, kind of blank space, this courtyard, that if I remember correctly is playground space.
Right.
So somebody looking at this map from the public without kind of the knowledge of this, sitting at this meeting, might be confused by that.
Oh, thank you for that, yes.
We can't expand into that otherwise blank area.
That's correct. Thank you.
And we're talking about, I'll skip over that, so we talked about that. I guess one of the things that I would say about the Stratfield site, and I think that we've spoken about this in other contexts, kind of a longer versus shorter term thing. You know, we renovated that school 10 years ago for a 504 population when we needed it. You know, my children have gone to Stratfield, and you know, so there was a point where we had four, four portables there, and we were jammed together. And I understand what the enrollment situation is today, and the space does exist there, but I think that the board needs to consider that, I don't know how long this can be, kind of a longer-term option, given population trends, and it may be something that we need to deal with in a redistricting conversation.
I think any of these five buildings will have impacts on that long-term planning.
No, I understand that. I just, speaking from my own experience with Stratfield.
Ms. Jacobson? Followed by Ms. Max Canelli.
Thanks. Dr. Jones, is the pre-K at Burr staying at Burr next fall, or is that moving, is that part of the five-classroom move?
Right, that moves, because we don't have Gen Ed pre-K anymore. They'll all be on one side.
Right. Okay. So I just wanted you to quickly just clarify for me, up to five classrooms, the five class, just how you came to the need for that number specifically, just if you could walk me through that.
Yeah. We've really looked at the number of students that we have now, and then we've looked at trying to lower that peer ratio, which most people in this region are 50/50. We know growth-wise, what happens is, if you start at 50/50, you're probably gonna be able to grow to 60/40. You hope you don't get to where we are now, where some of ours actually are 20%, 30%. But growth over time, we know we need at least five classrooms.
So that's to accommodate more typical peers and to meet the ratios?
It's to accommodate more typical peers, and it's to decrease the size of the caseloads of our special education teachers at the preschool. They have some of the largest caseloads in the entire district.
Okay, excellent. I just wanted to understand the five, number five. The next question I had was, you mentioned a number, I was going to ask what the current RI was, so I'm glad that you brought that with us. And you mentioned that if you moved the entire early childhood program, that means our preschools and the ECC, like every single early childhood program to McKinley, it would go to 22.1. But how many students would you have to move out? You'd have to move students out of McKinley to do that, right?
Yes, to do this at any building, at any of those five, it's anywhere between 150, 200 students, generally.
To put everybody together.
But that's the current numbers, and yes, to have all 11 into a current, one of our elementaries.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you repeat that number? 100, you said?
Yes, 150.
Okay, 150. Okay, thank you.
And of course, that changes. I mean, just when we get into long-term planning, according to where people live and grades.
I know. I just wanted to get a general, we get ballparked. Okay, that was just my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Ms. Max Canelli, followed by Mr. Asa.
Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, I haven't, I echo Ms. Pitco's concern regarding the playground. I know, at first, it had been a budget issue, then they did get some equipment there, but it is still wood chip entirely, is it not?
Yes.
So that would be, no?
No.
Mr. Cullen, probably.
Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. This past summer, we did a rubberized square fall zone surface, so it's no longer wood chips.
Okay, and that, which, that's in both locations or just in the back?
That's at Stratfield's preschool playground, and we did ECC's playground at Ward.
looked at trying to lower that peer ratio, which most people in this region are 50/50. We know growth-wise, what happens is if you start at 50/50, you're probably going to be able to grow to 60/40. You hope you don't get to where we are now, where some of ours actually are 20%, 30%. But, growth over time, we know we need at least five classrooms.
So, that's to accommodate more typical peers and to meet the ratios?
It's to accommodate more typical peers, and it's to decrease the size of, the caseloads of our special education teachers at the preschool. They have some of the largest caseloads in the entire district.
Okay, excellent. I just wanted to understand the five, number five. The next question I had was, you mentioned a number, I was going to ask what the current RI was, so I'm glad that you brought that with us. And you mentioned that if you moved the entire early childhood program, that means our preschools and the ECC, like every single early childhood program to McKinley, it would go to 22.1. But, how many students would you have to move out, you'd have to move students out of McKinley to do that, right?
Yes. To, to do this at any building, at any of those five, it's anywhere between 150, 200 students, generally.
To put everybody together.
Current numbers, and yes, to have all 11 into a current educate, one of our elementaries.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you repeat that number? 100, you said?
Yes. 150.
Okay, 150. Okay, thank you.
And of course, that changes. I mean, just when we get into long-term planning according to where people live and grades and yeah.
I know. We get ballparked. Okay. That was just my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Max Canelli, followed by Mr. Asa.
Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, I haven't, I echo Ms. Pitcah's concern regarding the playground. I know, at first, it had been a budget issue, then they did get some equipment there, but it is still wood chip.
Entirely, is it not?
Yes.
So, that would be, no?
No.
Mr. Cullen, probably.
Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. This past summer, we did a rubberized square fall zone surface, so it's no longer wood chips.
Okay, and that, which, that's in both locations or just in the back?
That's at Stratfield's preschool playground, and we did ECC's playground at Ward.
I, I guess I'm asking onsite at Stratfield, where is that? Was, in other words, was it, was it a third additional space, or did that rubberizing take over one of the two wood chip?
It was created for preschool, when we put preschool at Stratfield.
It's a third playground, but the third playground was there. It was with wood chips originally. We replaced it with a rubberized square system.
Okay. Next question, bathrooms, since I assume that this would be taking over kindergarten space, what would happen to the kindergarten classrooms in terms of having their self-contained bathrooms?
I'm out. You might ask Ms. Magoi to kind of speak to how the restrooms have worked.
Good evening. Liz Magoi, Stratfield Principal. Myself and Mr. Mancusi walked around, as well as Dr. Jones, and the thought is, at this point, that we would leave the preschool two classes where they are, and possibly look to the second grade classrooms that are there, and then somehow utilize the bathrooms to go along with that. There would be some modifications that would be necessary. We do have one kindergarten class right now that has a modified bathroom. They don't have a bathroom in their class, so we put a step stool, a little razor in there, a little, little, step stool, actually, just in order for those students to utilize that. So, that could be considered as well.
So, therefore, the kindergarten classes now would have, no kindergarten class would now have a self-contained bathroom. All of them would be going to the gang bathrooms.
I believe we were leaving the kindergarten where they are. One of them doesn't have that right now, the kindergarten bathroom. They use the first grade bathroom, but we already have two pre-K classrooms that have the toilet, and then the second grade classrooms, we would look to see what we would do there with the gang bathrooms there. Or, they could utilize the preschool classroom bathrooms, individual ones that will be right near there.
Okay. It's been a while since I was in there. All right, thank you. One question regarding Burr, because that then changes our racial imbalance plan.
Yes.
So, what does the, what would the board need to do about that, since we're now not offering the opt-in, I mean, the, the option for members of the community to come into the preschool with the possibility to then stay enrolled at that school? By removing that from Burr, what, will the board need to take action on that?
I don't think right now. I think when we go and look at the plan again in June, if we have to update the plan for the board, at that time, we can. I mean, the board gave me direction that we could move that pre-K and utilize that for ECC, so we're going with what the board is on record giving me direction for.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't saying that because I thought there would be objection. It was more just a, you know, process question. How does the administration of this work now with two active sites? How does that work?
I think you'll hear more about that in the budget. We still, we're still working through some of that programmatic aspect. If you ask me, what time is ECC, definitely going to start in the morning and end at the, end of the day, and what it looks like over five days, we can't answer that definitively yet. How Kristen, how her role will work, we're working on that. In the budget, we do have, assuming it stays in the budget, also some assistance with the child fine aspect that is new for early childhood this year, and that will, that will help in many ways, how her, how she functions as well.
Okay. One last, and obviously, I look forward to hearing more about that in the budget. Before I get to my last question, I did also, I should have started by saying this, is that a thank you to Dr. Jones and Mr. Mancusi for taking all of that community input and being so methodical and thorough about vetting it, and so that everyone felt that their voice was heard, that their idea was looked at, why it may or may not work. So, I certainly appreciate the time taken on that.
And Mrs. Bruno was very involved throughout that whole process.
Thank you as well. I apologize for leaving you out. The last thing I wanted to say was regarding the ECC Ward, ECC Stratfield feeder pattern, that I strenuous, strenuously hope that that is reconsidered. I think it is, yes, thank you for that slide. I think the last thing this town needs more of is stratifying our populations. I think the model for should, this should be the Fairfield Parks and Rec soccer team makeup, which is you're meeting children from all around the town. We see the results of this when we can have, and overall, I think our high schools have great relationships. I think the representatives we have here at the board model that well, offering congratulations to one another, et cetera. But I think the last thing we need to do is to keep that separation and to now bring it down to yet another level. I think the more that they are together, I think Fairfield Woods is the model for the town in some ways of what is better in terms of opening our children's eyes to the diversity of the town, and to know that Ward is not this other, Ludlow is not this other, that they both have wonderful children. I know someone at that school, and granted, I know this is just the preschool level, but I just, as, as an attitude thing, as an approach thing, I would really ask that that be reconsidered. And I know it already would be in the case of, you know, with, if Ms. Bruno believes that someone needs to be at Ward who otherwise would have been districted to Stratfield, but I really don't like that feeder pattern. I don't think it's good for the town or the education. Thank you.
If I may speak to that. Yeah, there's, it is quite complex, and one of the reasons we're, we're looking at the feeder pattern, which, it is the reason the whole district is structured, well, any district, really. Part of that has to do with even just busing. You know, having two children who live on the same street, same block, and they're going to two different schools, it, it would take double the busing. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to remember who gets bussed and who doesn't, but right now, actually, the staff could probably tell me. I believe it's our peers that don't have busing at all. And so, that's part of our discussion right now, is that, does it actually enhance the program? If the bus is going to go past their house and we can pick up peers, would we actually have a better peer model if they could hop on the bus, which they haven't been able to do? So, we're looking at all of those different components.
And, and to that, I'd say, I think that's a very thoughtful approach to it. I just would not want this bound by, I in fact, would like the goal to be 50/50. And absolutely, not, not to do that such that it had a negative budget impact. I'm not saying to, you know, do those odd busing routes where a bus is going right past someone's home and they have to wait for another bus, but that idea of striving for more of a 50/50 feeder pattern, I think is something that would be worth striving for. If you have one bus that's taking several kids who would be, for example, Mill Hill, and another bus that would have on its own, that is, say, coming from Sherman. If they're two independent buses, why can't they go to two different ECC sites, is my point. Likewise, if it's coming from North Stratfield and it's coming from Burr, why can't they go to two different sites so that the children are mixing and that the parents are mixing? I just think it's healthier for the town.
Mr. Asa?
Okay. So, just a quick question, and forgive me for being a little naive here, but a lot of talk happened prior about a centralized model, a decentralized model. So, am, am I understanding this right? If, if we're saying that we're sticking to the centralized model that's working at Ward, and then having a second campus with the same programmatic features and whatnot, less the CLC?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
Sorry. Regardless of the site that you go to, there will be some costs involved, I would assume. Are you thinking of budgeting that within next year's operating budget, or are you looking at reallocating some of the non-recurring, or what?
Well, the biggest cost we have is staff, and that, that has been built in, and that's...
No, I mean capital cost to put in the little toilets and stuff like that.
We, we are discussing, go ahead, Mr. Mancusi.
What I was going to say, I'm sorry to interrupt. We, we have looked at bathrooms, and that was one of the criteria when we were doing our rubric. And we've visited many preschools. There are, there is adaptive equipment, and we're going to ask Mr. Cullen, obviously, to look at all our available bathrooms for our students, but there is adaptive equipment also available for, that we would have to look into buying to make those toilets available for smaller people.
But, at the end of the day, you're going to absorb those costs within next year's operating budget.
Yes. And when we say absorb, it's just part of our, our actual operating, and that was part of that whole rubric and criteria, is making sure that wherever we're going, we're almost turnkey ready, so there's not an enormous expense to the school district.
And then, the only second comment I would have is, I would support Mrs. Max and Canelli's concern that we balance out, and whether we use the term 50/50, or that we not create a feeder pattern that suggests that one type of student goes one place and another type goes another place. The last time we redistricted, we, as a board, not this board, but we as a board, spent extra money to grandfather children into busing routes, because we thought that was in the best interest of the district and the students. And I think we ought to take the same attitude, recognizing there are logistics and issues like that, but we ought to put maintaining a reasonable balance as one of our goals to try and accomplish. So, I would support Mrs. Max and Canelli's concerns. I'm done.
Mrs. Gruber? Followed by Ms. Pitcah.
Yeah, I just had, just a clarifying question through the chair to Dr. Jones. So, I just went through and looked at the current enrollment and the sections in the schools that you mentioned, and I put Riverfield into, just because, talking about the air conditioning, I do agree that that's a very important issue to have, and I do understand why that was a concern with North Stratfield. So, so, of the fully air-conditioned schools, this year, Riverfield has 20 sections, plus they have the CLCS, so that's 21 classrooms there. So, they only have a swing of 20, of three classrooms, because they've got 24 total, all the 504 schools. McKinley has 24 sections, so obviously, I see what you mean with the space issues there. Then, Holland Hill, this year, has 18 sections. Do we know, do you, I'm sorry, I was looking for next year's enrollment projections, and I was just curious if that's going to stay the same or go up at all. Although, again, I do understand with Holland Hill, the issues, since that is going to be a brand-new school, and, you know, I think that would be an awful lot to take on initially. And then, I know with Burr, they have 18 general, because you're taking out, you'll be taking out the preschool, because right now, they have the 18 general, plus the preschool, plus they have a CLC there as well. So, they've got 20 classrooms, and if they took the preschool out, that would be 19. And then, Stratfield has the 18. So, they kind of have the lease strings attached, you know, basically, they've got the 18 sections. And is that going to be the same for next year as well, do you believe, for Stratfield?
I'm trying to remember the projections. I did not bring next year's projections on sections. Do you know, Ms. Magoi, what your projection?
I do believe it was 18. It was staying three sections at every grade level, and then we have the two pre-K right now, current. So, it's 20, including the two pre-K we have, but we should stay pretty even at the 18.
Okay. So, I guess my question is then, so you have the two classrooms for the pre-K now, so that would only give you four additional classrooms, and that is sufficient, because I know we're changing with the other two. So, so basically, there will be six pre-K classrooms at Stratfield? That could be used at Stratfield next year. So, you'd have the 18K through five, and then there are six additional classrooms.
We're trying, we were trying to look at a building that would have the capacity, so we, we wouldn't all of a sudden just be short a classroom.
Right.
But next year, there are four in the budget, which is the, the current ECC class at Stratfield, the two Gen Ed pre-Ks, plus one more, is built in the budget.
Got it.
Just with anticipation.
Okay.
And we actually, the projection is not quite there for that extra, but we felt like it was prudent to build it in, just based on what's been happening.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
No, no, I was next.
Sorry. Ms. Pitcah?
Where you're projecting putting in the ECC, where is the access to the nurse's office, having a child that had been at the ECC? One of the biggest things is potty training and accessing the nurse throughout the day. So, logistically, how will that work?
Our nurse is on the main level there. I think you've, have you visited Stratfield recently?
Not this school year.
So, you're welcome to come by at any point you want. But, right near the main office, as you walk in, if you go straight two doors, there's our main, there's our nurse's office right there. And we're looking at, right now, currently, the nurse's office backs up to the cafeteria. So, on that corner there, that's where our preschool classes are, and we're looking to put those other preschool classes right there, too. So, it will be fairly, a fairly short distance.
And they have toilets in the preschool classrooms?
Yes, they do. The current ones, they do. Yes.
So, my last question is actually, is this up for a vote at our next meeting?
I, I think it depends on the will of the board, the board's wanting to vote on it. Right now, it would be the staff recommendation, and generally, we would, just like we did last year, we would have just moved, we would have moved forward with it. But, this has been a big topic for the board, so if the board...
Well, the board typically votes on where students go to school, so that's why I asked that question.
Well, we already have preschool there, so the board would not vote to add sections in any one building. We already have two pre-Ks. But, I understand what you're saying, it's a big topic. So, if the board's wanting it as a voting item, to see what the will of the board is, this would be staff recommendation based off all of the assessment that we've done, to make sure that it meets the rubric for the children. And the staff.
Ms. Jacobson?
I just, mention of the bus tipped off my memory of something. I know that right now, we have some ECC students who spend quite a long time on the bus getting to ECC, almost up into an hour. Have you, I'm sure you have, but just taken into consideration any change in duration of bus time for students within this, with the chosen location, that we won't be exceeding? I know that's an hour statutory, which I think is kind of ridiculous, but has that been factored into the decision?
Well, we, well, when we're talking about the feeder pattern right now, obviously, the discussion the board has put forward tonight, we'll go back and look at, is there a way to actually have a unique feeder, where you know which schools go to which one, that would shorten bus times? And I would have to go look. I mean, when I asked for GPS data on it, and one of our other students, where somebody said they were on the bus for an hour, that was a very unique, unusual day. And Mr. Vicki does a really good job trying to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this location adds to that, or if that was thought about in terms of like bus time? We've checked, or that you've checked on that?
Yeah, I mean, we did, and we also pulled, you know, are the kids evenly distributed from all of our elementary zones? Because that was another thing that we wanted to just see. And they are actually equally distributed, with the exception of Dwight, which is the farthest building that has almost no students in, in preschool, early childhood.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to make one point and kind of echo what Mr. Peterson said earlier, that I think we're talking about this now, and we don't want to talk about a couple years down the road of, of moving this program again. But, I think it's important, as we get into the spring, and we do talk, and we do have the discussions about redistricting, that it's very important, now that we know, that the pre-K program as a whole needs to be incorporated heavily into this discussion for our long-term planning. So, I think this is going to be a topic that continues, even if we solve it for, for this 19 school year, September 19, I think that this is going to play in heavily on our facilities utilization long-term. So, I just wanted to make that point.
Ms. Sleeper?
I just want a second. Is this working? I just want a second. What Ms. Asa said, that, you know, we've been talking a lot about short-term and long-term, and I think even if, whether we take a vote next week or the decision's made today, that we continue this conversation so that the public doesn't think we've, we've couched something at short-term and we're not coming back to it is important. This is a trust-building activity with the public and our communities and our staff, and so I just want a second. What Ms. Asa said, that this will be a conversation going on for quite a while, for a long-term solution.
I have some questions, just a couple. Just for having had a child at the ECC, and I did attend some of the parent groups, a lot of it is just the sense of community. I think there's a lot of concern about, when you put it in an elementary school, just the physical space, are the second grade classrooms, are they adjacent to the preschool classrooms? I mean, is it going to be sort of like...
In succession of each other.
And in terms of engaging the parent community, you know, at the ECC now, parents can pick up, they wait, there's a chance to congregate. Will that opportunity be there at Stratfield, and how do you see?
I will say, I've had the pleasure of, go ahead. I've had the pleasure of speaking most, to most of the parents who have students that attend the ECC at Stratfield, and who went through the ECC at Stratfield last year as well. And the feedback I get from the, the Stratfield parents is as positive as the feedback I get, we, we got from the, you know, the parents whose children attend the ECC at Ward.
We have, most recently, which has been nice this year, had a, an increase in our parents coming out from preschool, most recently, in the last couple of weeks, to do cultural experiences with our pre-K classes. Both our Gen Ed preschool class, as well as our ECC class, we've had several parents come in to do little activities, as well as share their culture with the classes. And they also, at pickup time, we have a little group that congregates, so they're a little group out at arrival and dismissal. And we're now having our Safety Patrol, which is a really nice addition. Their fifth-grade students are assisting our pre-K kids in the class, in, in, at arrival, and they're picking them up and bringing them to class. And I have to say that they are absolutely loving that, both it's, it's a benefit to the fifth-grade students, they're fighting over who's going to get to take care of the pre-K kids, as well as the fourth-grade students are eager to become Safety Patrol, so they can have that, that leadership opportunity as well. So, we're always looking for ideas to grow our parent connection. We're going to be doing some... We're going to be doing some things with parent evenings and such at Stratfield School. But we're looking to grow that. And I think it's grown a little bit in the last year and a half that we've had them there.
And I think it's more just, not even just cultural programs, just being in the building and knowing that you can see the speech and language pathologies, you can see the OT, and just sort of building that sense of community. Because now you have a community, a smaller community within a larger community. And I would want, my hope would be, that there would be that smaller community within a larger community. And that as you're moving forward, that you take that into consideration. I haven't spoken to any parents who have their children at Stratfield. When I visited, the children all seemed happy. I had major concerns about the playground, as you know, and the OTPT room. You know, I'm glad to hear that that's been taken into consideration. I share some of the concerns about the feeder pattern. I think that we would look, that said, having had a child, be the sole kid, I think, from Dwight at the ECC, I do think that it, there is some benefit to making sure that preschoolers have friends in preschool who follow, who attend elementary school with them, that kind of move along. I do understand the transportation challenges with that. But being that you said you're not sure with start times, maybe you can stagger. The two schools are pretty close together, that maybe they can do ECC earlier and Stratfield a little bit later. Thank you for your time.
One other thing I just wanted to say that we're working with, I work very nicely with Kristin Bruno. So we'll look to expand some of those things that she has for her parent community so that the parents feel just as welcome and there's that strong connection in a larger building. But we understand that it's a subgroup within that. So we'll do our best to create those connections.
And I, from my perspective right now, this is more of a facilities issue that we're talking about right now. I think there's a lot of other work and discussions that need to be done. And the board, it has to come back to the board, just so we can see how we're building the program, the programming at the second location. Just for the board, in terms of a voting item, and to Dr. Jones, if, I don't want this to, we're obviously not going to vote on it right now, was noticed. If we decide to vote and we put it off to January, does that hold up any work that you need to do?
You know, I would say by January, no. I mean, if the board really, if the board wants to take a vote on it, I think it's just that if the vote were no, we would need a lot, we would, that would be the challenge. Is what is, what is the will of the board? And it would take some, a lot more discussion. Because we've looked very thoroughly at the five schools that we have. And we have the space that we have. And unless the board disagrees with what we had in the rubric, because we really have, we took all of those into consideration, so.
So knowing that, does anybody have any questions about some of the other schools that were on the list? Get any more information now that we're all at the table and we have Mr. Mancusi and Mr. Cullen here? Was that a hand, Ms. Jacobson?
I just have one, first, a short, I know we're focused on short-term, and I'm going to keep us focused on short-term. But over the long-term, in terms of our enrollment projections and our utilization, Holland Hill does have much lower utilization rate of Strat, not much, but about 10% less than Stratfield over the long-term. So as long as we understand, as I think it's been mentioned before, that this is a short-term solution and that we'll be looking for other things going forward. Because as a long-term, Holland Hill does have more space projected than Stratfield does going forward for the long-term. So I just want to reiterate that difference at this point, that it's just short-term, right?
Ms. Pico, and then?
I apologize, I really haven't been to Stratfield since last school year. So my curiosity is, how many sections were available at Burr? Four.
Do you remember?
Including the current pre-K.
To be honest, I don't have the, do you remember, Mr. Mancusi?
No, but I do know, when I did a walk-around with, with Mr. Bluestein, there, that would require, I believe, a small amount of redistricting of students to capture the space there where we, that we wanted, that is available at Stratfield.
This is a 504 school, correct?
Does it have the science lab, though? Did you remember, Ms. Cullen?
It does have a science lab.
Yeah, because that was one piece that we also, which actually helped with that building. And really, I think that one was, was that the one that was second on the rubric when we scored it? It was pretty close.
Yeah, that was.
It was pretty close.
I'm just asking, as a short-term, if we're only looking at a space for one whole year.
Yeah.
Logistically, the nurse's office is right there, the physical therapy room is right there. Everything's present in one floor. That's the only reason why I asked.
Yeah.
But once again, that's not having seen the space you're talking about at Stratfield.
Right. Another factor, too, that we didn't really build into the rubric, but we talked about, was having some sort of proximity between the two, a little bit closer, we thought was actually a little bit of an advantage as well. We didn't put it as part of the rubric. But when we were talking about Burr and where Burr's located versus where Stratfield is located to the other, if we have some service providers that we had a .5 and a .2, it would be easier. And we hope to not have very much of that. But when you're growing, you know, we could be adding speech in the middle of the year, and you may need a .2. And somebody wants to pick up that .2, who's already a halftime employee with us, and you want to give them that opportunity. So that was a little bit of the thought, but it's a great building, too.
And, you know, our Stratfield families are very happy with their early childhood programming that their children are receiving currently. That, to me, meant a lot. And the school understands the needs of children, like three- to five-year-old children.
I don't disagree with you. I will say that so does Burr.
Yeah, I think, too, just from the staff perspective, too, just understand that we, you know, we have the conversation with the principal. We have walked the buildings. We're also looking at just the complexity of the building. So Burr, for instance, has a very high EL population that doesn't exist at Stratfield. So a lot of their resources, they have a CLC, and they have a very, an EL population that requires more resources. So we look at the capacity of the building and the staff as well to take on a brand-new program. And that was part of our conversation, not that it couldn't be done. But we're trying to make sure we're balancing our buildings.
Burr does currently have a CLC. And, you know, our initial projections for next year, it doesn't seem that their numbers are going to decrease. And depending on that increase, could, could force the opening of a second classroom for CLC students at Burr.
Done?
Yep.
Ms. Teresa?
I just have a question, because with regards to Ms. Pico asking about a vote, is there a way we can get, like, a sense if this board thinks it needs to go to a vote? The only reason I ask is that we're rapidly approaching budget season. And I don't know what kind of implications that would have from the staff side. And I don't know if there are any. Maybe, Dr. Jones, you can tell us if it would affect that in any way. And, again, to the chair, I'm not sure if there's a way to get a sense if this needs to go to a vote, or maybe someone can...
Well, I think that Dr. Jones answered that it can wait to January unless, you know, there's a real feeling of opposition against it. I know that that's kind of taking an informal vote here. I'm hesitant, I do want to put this to a vote at the next meeting, simply because we've been talking about it as a community for the last six months. And I would like to give the public a chance to weigh in on it.
Okay, so it will be a vote?
That is...
That's what it's, sounds like.
It will be a vote at the next meeting. I'm going to add it as agenda item on the next meeting as a vote. And can I just get, anybody want to visit Stratfield prior to our January meeting? So can we set up a visit prior, over the next, it would be, you know, next...
Before January.
So next week or the first week in January?
We can, and I think we probably need to aim either for, unless you're wanting to see children in the building in evening, because we have set those visits up. And we do have a really difficult time coordinating all of your schedules. So you operate differently, so. Okay.
Ms. Dwyer?
I understand that there's going to be a vote. But I think this board should think about whether each time the superintendent has to make a facility decision, are we setting up a precedent that says, well, no, those can't happen unless there's a board vote? With the information that was provided tonight, I am comfortable that the superintendent has explored all alternatives and is the CEO of this district and in charge with the responsibility to deliver the services in the buildings that we have and make the changes necessary to ensure quality is maintained. So I understand the vote will be taking place. But I, for one, to answer Mr. Asa's question, don't think it's required.
Ms. Pico?
I just want to reiterate that it is up to the board where the children go to school in this district. That's why a vote is needed.
Thank you. Any final comments? I appreciate Mr. Dwyer's comments. And I think in this particular instance, it is about facilities, but we are talking about our most vulnerable population. And I really, mostly, I want to give the public a chance to weigh in. We didn't notice a vote. And I think it's more about how we use our buildings. I think this is really where we put these children, well, it goes with any child, where we put any child. But this is specialized programming, and just want to do our due diligence. Mr. Asa?
Can, if it's not planned already, can we just make sure that all of this backup information is uploaded onto the website and the public is noticed of that prior to the next meeting? So they can read through and get any information, maybe if they're not attending this meeting or the previous one?
And I would also just remind the public that we do have our town hall on Thursday. That anyone who is listening, to please come and share your thoughts with us then, because it would be very valuable in making our decision. All right. If no other comments, we'll move on. Old business, approval of amendment, amendment to the 2019, 2020 student calendar. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the 2019, 2020 student calendar as enclosed. Can I have a motion? Ms. Sleeper, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. Dr. Jones?
Yeah, as I messaged the board, we tried really hard to adhere to what the board asked us to do. As we started calculating and looking at the calendar for our 12-month staff, our one person in central office, the only person who actually picked it up, realized that teachers had 188 days. Teachers, and the students were still 182. And as we went back in to make that adjustment, the only way for us to get back where teachers are at that 187 is to go with those early releases. And it takes three, four conferences. So that is the only change that you see in October.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Teresa?
Not necessarily a question, but maybe a comment, a question and a comment. Can you just clarify, Dr. Jones, is the middle school affected like the elementary school for the conferences and the early release? Or am I incorrect in saying that the middle school is done more by an appointment and not as many days?
I don't know if there's somebody here that can speak to how they operate their conferences. Oh, there, Mr. Fermato, do you mind coming forward?
And the reason, I'll give you while you walk up here, the reason for my question is, I'm wondering for next year, not now, I don't want to deliberate this now, but I'm just wondering for next year, is it possible to have the three early release days for the elementary, but not necessarily the middle and high?
Anthony Fermato, Principal, Tomlinson Middle School. We do the three days, we do them by appointment, and we also stagger. We have the morning, the afternoon appointments that are within the school day, that's the early release. And then the other appointments are in the evening. So the teachers have their prep time during the early release day.
So would it be possible or feasible for, at the middle school level, to do it in two, with two early releases? Or do you feel you need the three at middle school as well?
I don't know if we need the third day, but it is helpful to have that third day.
Okay, so the only thing I'd just like to add is a comment for next year when planning, if we could take that into consideration.
We did talk about that extensively with elementary, and they were very strong about it. And I don't, because I'm not sure if you were here, Mr. Fermato, for the last discussion. But we're talking about if the teachers have evening conferences, they must have that early release time. We can't have them go a full day and then have evening.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
So without three, we would lose that.
And the scheduling would be difficult based on parent schedules. So you can't fit that many conferences in. So you do have high demand for the conference times. So you would need it to meet the demand.
Okay, so I, all I ask is that that be explored and maybe some alternatives to eliminate at that middle school level, if we can, if it's conference-related, an interruption in the day. Thank you.
Ms. Gerber?
Well, just one thing to keep in mind, too, is that middle school only has conferences in the fall. They don't have spring conferences. So it's only K through five for the March. So that's just something that they, they don't have as many early dismissal as elementary.
Ms. Maxon-Kinelli?
Just to follow up on that also, is that maybe it would help to Mr. Asa's point? Because I think it would be interesting just to affirm that we're doing it the right way. Is that if the middle schools could simply collect the data on, I know it's only sixth graders, I think, who get, or used to be, sixth graders would get scheduled for them with the team leader or their homeroom teacher. But seventh and eighth, it's by appointment only. But maybe if some data could be collected in terms of actually how much time was taken up or how many conferences were needed. Because if we could reduce it to two, I do think it's, it would be helpful to families. And needless to say, good for instructional time as well. So if we had that data, we would see, is it needed or isn't it? So I would, I would agree with that point.
Any other comments? Okay. So we're ready to vote? Oops, thank you. Go to the public, any comment on this? Seeing none? Go to the board, ready for a vote? Could I have a motion to approve the, that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the 2019, 2020 student calendar as enclosed?
All favor?
Ms. Sleeper, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Maxon-Kinelli, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Ms. Pico? Motion passes. Eight, one. Okay, moving on, adoption of policies. Can I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 4118.51 slash 4218-51 personnel certified, non-certified social media? Mrs. Gerber? Can I have a second?
That should be on, I didn't even pick up on this, that should be on for a first read.
The social media one?
No, I apologize. No, where's the other one? God.
Later.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Somebody can second it?
Can I second it? Okay. Would you like, would you like to say anything about it, Ms. Maxon-Kinelli?
Yes, I apologize. I think it's because I was, we were just working with it and talking about it. It was freshest in my mind, so it felt like this was on for a first read. So my apologies. So for the social media policy, I did receive a few questions from board members, which I tried to address. And I did, also, a few board members did ask if we had any staff reactions to it. So I did reach out, wanting to be proactive about this, because, to Mr. Smoller, because for me, and through, I don't even know how many board members served as policy members, because this has been spanning almost two years that we have talked about this, broached it, not had time for it, postponed it, needed more administrative input. So a lot of board members have had, have put their fingerprints on this one. And the one common thread through all of those conversations is not that we were trying to come down hard on staff. It was that we wanted to provide definitive direction to staff, literally to keep them, help to guide them in not making a mistake. Because in fact, the ideas of First Amendment rights to speak and to communicate are not an absolute when it comes to something like staff use of social media. And so it was looking to be clear about that. And so there were a few suggestions for language changes regarding definitions, definition of social media being added, some queries of others. However, I'm not going to advocate for that stance. I will let anyone who wants that, those language changes to bring them forward themselves, and we'll see if the board is interested. So again, I hope I answered the, I know that was a very oblique comment, because I'm not sure if this conversation will continue or not. But as I said, I didn't receive any other questions. And so I hope you certainly don't ask me anything of a legal nature, as our legal guide is not with us tonight. So I open it up to any staff questions or comments.
Any comments? Okay. Ms. Pico?
I will admit, I was one of the people that reached out to Mrs. Maxon-Kinelli. I did do some research into districts that I had worked in to try to find language to amend. But after much discussion, I didn't have any to put forward tonight.
Okay, seeing anybody else? Seeing none, go to the public, any public comment on this?
Bob Smoller, President of the Fairfield Education Association. I know Ms. Maxon-Kinelli was great in reaching out to me. We did also pass the policy by the CEA Legal Counsel. The policy is very vague, but apparently that's typical for social media policies out there. out there. We did make three recommendations, which I hope you will consider as you think about the vote. One, the definition of social media is somewhat unknown, and we do recommend that you add some kind of a definition so people are aware of what you're talking about. Some venues, groups of people on emails are considered, others it's just Facebook and Snapchat and things like that. And so if the intention is to provide some guidance to staff about what to do and not to do, we certainly think that some kind of a definition of social media would be appropriate. Perhaps that could be addressed in administrative regs. Secondly, in the, I think it was the second or third bullet, there was a, kind of a tagline added on at the end that just said, you know, "These are things that we don't like, bullying, obscene gestures, et cetera, obscene comments, et cetera." And then that end, it said, "And something like this." And that was just such a ultra-vague comment that leaves, you know, that was fairly, fairly nondescript, that we would appreciate that be left out. It was just, among the vague things in this policy, that was the vaguest of the vague, and really leaves, leaves teachers without much guidance as to how to proceed. And the third thing we mentioned, which perhaps could be addressed in administrative regs, is most of these things, teachers have no training or knowledge about the policies and procedures of the district. And we add about 80 new staff every single year, and if this is something that's going to be in existence and teachers are going to be held accountable for, I think the district really needs to provide annual training to the staff so they know what the policies and regulations and procedures are that they're being held accountable for, and what the do's and don'ts are. Right now, it's kind of left up to people to try to figure out what to do and not to do, and it's kind of a slippery path for the staff. So we would recommend all three of those things. Adjustments be made, and I appreciate your consideration. We are in supportive of a social media policy, and I, I really commend Ms. Max and Cannelly for reaching out to me and thank her, she does a professional job as always. Thank you.
Mr. Smoller? Sorry. I didn't mean to jump you.
No?
Can you just, I apologize, I was getting up to get a copy of it. The second item you mentioned, can you just mention which line was that?
Yeah, I forgot which bullet it is.
It's bullet two, or similarly inappropriate communications.
Thank you.
Which is just, I don't know what that means.
It, just as a follow-up, because I did, I respected the, I'm all set, because I'm just going to speak to those points. I did follow up with Dr. Jones, because I didn't want to come at this with something new, because this is certainly something the policy committee did in conjunction with central office. I thought it was a very fair point about the definition of social media, but Dr. Jones agreed, and Mr. Smoller has already anticipated that that would be appropriate for the regs. But it certainly is appropriate to define it there. It's not fair to have two emails between two people, say, "Well, I don't think email counts." And Mr. Smoller might, you know, agree with me, but a future board, you know, a future issue, that could be a problem. So that would be defined. Number two, I leave up to the board. I think we were comfortable with it in policy, which is why we supported the language when it was in there, the emphasis on that being inappropriate. But again, that's up to the board. Number three, I could not, the point regarding the teacher, teacher training, I couldn't agree with Mr. Smoller more on that, and Dr. Jones is already at work, not that she can't speak to this herself, but she is already at work on the idea of trying to pull together, and I, not with any timeline in mind, but some kind of handbook for staff and for new staff, exactly to that point, to train them in what does the Fairfield School District expect, what is policy, what are you held accountable for? And this would certainly be something that would be incorporated into that, because again, that was our entire point, you know, with this, is that because social media is new, it is changing, there are ways to get into trouble that you don't even realize you could, and we can't, it's just like any child, and adults are not different. It's hard to hold someone accountable for something that they don't even realize is wrong, or is an issue. So again, so to one and three, and then number two, it's up to the board. I'm still comfortable with the language as is, because I know its intent, but that's up to the board.
Ms. Asa?
So with regard to number two, I would just ask from, I understand what Mr. Smoller's saying in the idea, I guess my question is enforceability. So similarly inappropriate communications, I mean, I kind of get what you're, I think I get what you're getting at, if that makes sense. But with regards to enforcing the policy, I can see how that could be a little vague, and I'm just curious, I mean, Ms. Deasy's not here to weigh in, but from a legal aspect, is having that in there, I guess my question, does it, is it enforceable? What is it?
And the nature of our conversation all along, and again, Mr. Smoller hit on this point, is that this is vague, and that was where we had started far more prescriptive in the first policies we were looking at, and when we were trying to mix and match different policies with far more specific languages, that we could really tell, "You can't do this, you can't do that, that's okay, that's a little bit gray, that's right." And we started real, in 24 hours, there could be a new mode of social media that then we hadn't anticipated. So I couldn't agree more. It's a frustrating aspect of the policy, that it's not more prescriptive to a degree. But then we realized, that's exactly why we had to stay vague, because things are changing and uses is. So there's a degree of trust, there are also regs still to be worked out, but it's, we knew what we were getting at, we knew what we wanted to put in the hands of administrators and to have as a, as an instrument to guide faculty to hopefully use, exercise good judgment. And Dr. Jones, I don't know if you, I keep speaking over, but feel free obviously to chime in.
No, no, I agree with what you're saying. Creating a policy we can't enforce is the worst kind of policy. So in something like this, the reg we can change, and we can change with social media, we can stay up to date. And what we're working on, Ms. Deasy, and I would like to have some sort of guidance handbook for our staff that outlines a lot of this. We haven't had that in Fairfield, and I do think it's missing. So that's where that would actually show up. When we hire new people, they would know, you know, not only social media, but what about like food in your classrooms, and, you know, the food allergy policy, and there's, there are a lot of things that new staff could utilize in a handbook to really understand what's in policy, what's in regs. So we're working on that right now, but...
So it would be the reg that was enforced and disciplinary action was taken that is tied to this policy?
The regulation is really what helps us understand how to implement policy, but it is changed, but it can change with the times. So it's very helpful to be in the regs.
Okay. So I guess you kind of hinted at what I was getting at, is are we in this, are we, is there anything in this that is creating an unenforceable policy, in your view?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Pico?
Conversation that I had with Mrs. Max and Cannelly is that, and I had said this at the least, last meeting, was that I thought the policy in being too vague was very subjective, and that whatever the intent was, when you sat in the policy committee, and I apologize for not coming to that committee meeting, the intent is sometimes lost. And so that's why we have to be more specific in defining social media or using persuasive words. And I know the countless hours we've spent looking at every little word, that this one just seems too vague. And, and working in a school district, I would not be happy with this policy, because I've had more prescriptive policies that told me exactly what my administrators expected of me, as coming from the Board of Education. And we had waited so long to bring this policy together, that now to do it and to be so subjective and vague, just doesn't seem to do it justice.
We're ready to vote? Okay, I'm going to put forth the motion. Do I have to read this again?
To the public.
Oh, thank you.
Went to the public already.
Went to the public already?
Good.
Okay.
You can read it again, just for that.
Don't have to?
Yeah, you could.
Okay. Yeah. That adoption of policy 4118.51/4218.51, personalized, certified, non-certified, social media, recommend a motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 4118.51/4218.51, personalized, certified, non-certified, social media. All in favor? Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Gerber, myself, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed. Ms. Pico? Motion passes eight, one. Moving on, can I have a motion to put forth policy 3240, recommend a motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 3240, business and non-instructional operations, tuition and fees? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Max and Cannelly?
I received no comments on this, so if there are no questions, I'm ready to vote, or if there are questions now.
Any questions? Going to the public? Any public comment on this? Okay, back to the board. That the Board of Education adopt policy 3240, business and non-instructional operations, tuition and fees, all in favor? Ms. Pico, Ms. Lieber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson? Motion passes nine zero. Moving on, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 capital non-recurring projects. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Mrs. Jones, do you want to make any opening comments on this? I know there was a change since what was presented at the last meeting.
Yeah, I do know Mr. Cullen will speak to this, but after the last meeting, we did pull the Tomlinson flooring into non-recurring, so, and that was based on conversation here at the board table. Mr. Cullen?
Thank you very much. For the record, Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. So the new total requested for 2019-2020 capital non-recurring is $2,781,755. It's still eight projects. The difference, as you'll see, is we pulled the Walter Fitzgerald Campus project and put that in our 2019-2020 proposed budget maintenance project list, and we moved the Tomlinson Middle School flooring issue that we've been dealing with now three years as one major project in non-recurring to request from the town bodies. So you'll see, it starts on page, in case you haven't seen it. Page forty-six. So we did a write-up and a history to identify the three different areas in the building and the years of the existing floor tile. We have very good proposals from flooring companies that came out and walked all the areas, identified where we have wood floor joists, wood plywood, where we have concrete, where we'll need mastic and filler. Spent a lot of time on that. We have a professional service consultant for any areas where there'll be asbestos abatement. They're going to need to do air clearance testing and check the containments and file all paperwork with the state. And then we have a proposal from a state contract abatement company that we've worked with, AAIS, who's done great work with us. Then we provided some photos of some of the really bad areas. Page fifty shows a classroom where the tiles are cracking and moving, and there's gaps. Page fifty-one shows a corridor where we've done some patching ourselves to try and repair some really bad areas. And then page fifty-two, this is the actual lobby area where there's a waiting area outside the nurses' room. This is actually one of the areas where there's wood on wood joists. And then we showed you a typical photograph of a corridor that we did brand new. So I'll take any questions then?
Ms. Asa, followed by Ms. Max and Cannelly.
And Ms. Gerber. Typically on these projects, when we're dealing with potential asbestos and hazmat, what type of percentage of this number is built in as a cushion or a reserve for unforeseen circumstances?
We don't put a really large contingency when we have a contractor that comes out, and we have such good records, asbestos management records for the school. He's very familiar with this area, so we didn't build in a large contingency. We also have the option of, so many classrooms are getting done, so many corridor areas, as we're proceeding through the school building, we can look at some areas and cut back if we had to, if the costs were going to run over. But we're very comfortable with the proposals we got from the AAIS company, abatement contractor.
So I would like to make a comment that I recently toured this school, and the principal and staff has done a very good job, I don't want to say covering up, but...
Hiding it.
Making it look as good as possible. But I can say that in seeing this in myself, it is in dire need, and has been, obviously, as we know. Can you just comment on, it seemed to me like there was a pretty big square footage, building-wide, needing this repair. Does this cover 100% of it, 80% of it, what would you say?
Of the whole building?
Yes.
No, it wouldn't be...
Of the whole, no, of the whole in need of repair?
Oh, in need of repair, it's 100%.
So 100% of the flooring that is in need of repair due to what we're seeing in front of us today is included in this number, and you're comfortable with the contingency built in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Max and Cannelly?
That was my first question was, is that, are we going to be hearing about this again, or is this supposed to take care of it? But then the question connected to that, how much of this flooring that we're going to invest this money in is the, are parts of the school that get flooded?
All of it. Any place that water has intruded into the building. Well, with the exception of the cafeteria. The cafeteria has new tile flooring, we've had some water intrusion in there that we've fixed. That's not getting replaced. It still is in good shape, we've cleaned that up. But anywhere it seeps through masonry walls, it is going to be replaced. And I want to add that this isn't a permanent fix for 20, 30 years. The flooring, if you read the description, some of the flooring is from the 2007 addition. We're hoping we'll get 10 to 15 years out of this repair and fix, and that's mainly because we're dealing with some areas in the building that still have wood floor joists and plywood flooring, that we're going to have to repair, do some special coating to, and then do new VCT over. So ideally, we'd like to rip all that wood out...
And we're not because...
...just the cost and location and how much disruption it would be to those...
So it's not a summer project?
No. Much bigger project than that.
So what can we do about the flooding?
Well, the flooding is being dealt with, there's a...
It has been for a while.
There's a lot of projects we're doing.
Yeah.
The most recent one coming up will be a repair to the back of the building where the buses park.
Yep.
There's a, what's called a water runoff pit and retaining wall. That water line underground, we believe, is cracked and isn't large enough to take on the huge amounts of water when we have excessive water in a short period of time. For a general rainstorm, it does, but when we're having two or three inches in an hour, it fills up, and that leaks into the windows and wall of those classrooms. So we are looking at adding a large sump pump in there that will take some of the water and divert it away from that area. We're getting proposals to look at digging that up, although it's almost 17 feet below grade, so it's very far down. It will disrupt the whole retaining wall, and it goes all the way out to School Street. But we are looking at working at that. We have a contractor that is repointing the outside of that brick wall, caulking and flashings, which are now 13 years old. And then on the inside, going to remove the paint on the masonry walls, scrape it down, repoint it, and reseal it. That's one fix. The second fix we just finished was a parapet wall up on the roof. Every 10 years, we have to get up and scrape this wall and recode it. We just did that about a month ago, and fixed a lot of the repairs that were coming up on the upper levels. One of the third areas, we have some water intrusion, is the music suite. So the music suite's out on the front of the building, right side, excessive water runs down the street and from the train station, it flows into this building before it diverts away. We added a large, bituminous rerouting of a drain in that area to get the water away from there. So ultimately, we'd like to work with the town to increase the size of the water runoff drainage pipe that's around that site. It turns out that it's original to 1950s and 60s. It is for all the streets, all the water runoff, all the train station, and the school building. And it seems to be excessive when we have large amounts of rain in a short period of time. It just can't keep up.
Of those three fixes that you described, I don't believe any of those would address the cafeteria, though.
They do, because they all incorporate the drainage that goes out to School Street. They do, because they all incorporate the drainage that goes out to School Street. And then the cafeteria drainage along the window well ties in with it.
So, the window well, this would help with that window well?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I know Mr. Asa had a follow-up, but I still would be curious about what would it take to take care of all of that wood, all of that cement flooring? You know, what would be the size of that project? I hate coming back to something twice, but I do recognize there could be of such a greater number that it's not feasible in this budget, but what are we talking about?
I don't have a project number, but to take a first-floor area and try and rip the wood joists out of and do it in concrete is a much larger project than a summer, nine weeks, has. You're disrupting a huge area, structuralness, you know, you need a structural engineer to look at that and-
But you're saying eventually, we're going to have to do exactly that?
No, we have to just keep on top of the VCT flooring. I mean, when you're dealing with an old wood floor, it gets any moisture in it, humidity in it, it's going to move, expand and contract, crack some of the VCT floor tiles, affects the glue that's holding them down. We're just going to have to keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had a question. First of all, is it 2005 or 2007 was the Tomlinson renovation?
It was finished 2007, so it started in 2005.
Okay.
We accepted the building in 2007 and the has-built drawings.
Right, okay. And so, I know you said that 100% of the flooring that is in need of repair will be repaired. What percentage of the building is this flooring?
I don't know that. I'd have to get back to you on that and give you a percentage. I have the drawings, so I can lay them all out and figure out the percentages for you, but-
So, I guess my question then would be, the percentage that isn't being done, what state is that in?
Some of it's brand-new to 2018. One of the photos shows what we did know-
Right, okay. Some of it's that, but not all of it.
Right, some of it, the brand-new addition, we're not touching at all, that's on the right side, that was done by Taissu Kim, that's not involved with this at all.
Right, so that's from 2005, '07.
Right.
Because you did say there was-
There is some.
Some is failing, but not all.
Right, the parts that Turner Construction and the team opted to go over, original VCT or VAT, which was an energy savings measure, that portion of the building is popping and we have to redo it. But we're taking it down to the subfloor.
Right.
We're not going over.
Okay, so again, just to reiterate, this will be it for the time being. There aren't any other sections-
No.
That might not be needed right now, but maybe in a couple of years will be, or you're thinking long-term?
With this repair, I'm hoping we'll get 10 to 15 years.
Total of the whole school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Asa?
So, to follow up on Mrs. Max and Canelli, I'm in favor of this project, but I have some serious reservations here in the fact that we've just discussed a lot of water management issues, right? Mitigating those floods or water penetration to the building. So, what is going, what is our, I guess, guarantee that we're going to do $440,000 worth of work and water is still going to be coming in because the drain line going under the railroad tracks isn't sufficient, or the dry well isn't sufficient, or whatnot? So, I'd curious to see if we could hear, what is your likelihood that, I mean, obviously, I'm assuming we're doing these sump pumps and everything prior to the floor, correct?
Sump pumps went in this past week.
Okay, and what happens when the power goes out or the sump pump fails or, you know, because mechanicals fail?
Yes, we have a team of custodians and maintenance staff ready with portable sump pumps already at the school in a closet, ready to go.
What happens when it happens at 2:00 in the morning?
They still are going.
So, every time it rains, custodians are going out to the school at heavy rains in the middle?
Yes, we prep ahead of time. We also put a sensor in for the cafeteria, which is the lowest level. So, as soon as a drop of water starts to flow under the door, a sensor goes off, it pages our maintenance department staff, so we can get there as quick as possible, as soon as there's any water coming in there.
Okay. And my other follow-up question regarding the floor joists and wood, subfloor. So, you're talking about to change that, you know, changing that to, I'm assuming, different beams and a poured concrete. So, you already mentioned or you hinted that you don't have an idea of the cost, but this could be a 10-year fix. So, my one, my question is, is doing this every 10 years cheaper than doing an investment that will last 30 to 50?
That's a very good question. We would probably need to look at that, so-
I think it would be very wise to have that information as a backup when we go to present this to other town bodies.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Max and Canelli?
Just one quick question, based on page five, regarding the Information Technology Switch Replacement Project Phase Two. Just the line in here of, although this entire project was bid, a price escalation may occur. Is that something you're anticipating of what size? Anything that could derail this if you get with only this much money and then that would be an issue?
We've been guaranteed by the bid vendor that they're going to hold the pricing. The only thing that might, they might come back with us is that there's some egregious change because of the tariff war that's going on right now with China, because these are manufactured in China.
Damn.
Yeah. We hope not, because there should be stock around. They know that this project is going forward, but as we all know, there are no guarantees.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, to the public, any public comments? Thank you. Mr. Cullen?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll get back to the board with those two questions.
Thank you.
Percentage of tile in the building and the concrete cost possibly to replace the wood.
And just, Dr. Jones, just as part of your update, just this work that's being done in Tomlinson regarding the water, just as you always do, just keep us abreast on where we are with that as we move forward with this.
Thank you very much.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. That the Board of Education approved the 2019-2020 Capital Non-Recurring Projects, all in favor? Motion passes, nine zero.
Alumni survey?
Yep. Okay. We are ready for the alumni survey. Mr. Hatzis, Mr. Ebling?
Before we begin, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Jones and Chairman Vitale and the entire board for rearranging the agenda tonight, so I would have the opportunity to see my children perform at a concert in my home district, so thank you.
So, good evening. We, David Ebling, the headmaster of Fairfield Ward High School. We did want to be sure Mr. Cummings joined us tonight, because really, we look at this, well, it says Fairfield High School's Alumni Survey. We really look at this as a pre-K alumni survey, and I think as we go through tonight's presentation, you'll see a lot of work around our vision of the graduate, which of course is for pre-K students as well. In our next slide, we show you the, some of the background information. This was the survey that was administered to the graduating class of 2016. Fairfield Ward graduates surveyed in the summer of 2017 and Ludlow graduates in the summer of 2018. The combined class size of 733, about 200 surveys were returned, so about 27.3% of our graduates responded to the survey. We also were able, through Futuristics who administered the survey, to ask students to identify where they fell in terms of the majority of courses taken, were they in our AP program, taking four or more, our honors program, or our college prep program. So, you can see the percentage breakdown there as well. The big question, we asked this, I heard the Ludlow Board representative talk about the number of graduates that came back over our Thanksgiving break, and we had similar numbers at Fairfield Ward. And I know Mr. Hatzis and I, when we greet those students, we often say, so how'd we do? How prepared were you? Were you ready for college? And this shows us that we're doing a great job. 94.3% of our students are reporting that they're being better, prepared, or as prepared as their peers when they, when they attend college. So, we, we get the dialogue with them at Thanksgiving weekend, but often they talk about the fact that high school is harder than freshman year at college. So, we do appreciate that. Lot of indicators in the report. You have a lot of detail that we provided for you as background to this. Tonight, we thought we'd concentrate on those indicators that corresponded to our vision of the graduate. You know, we are looking at six skills. We want all our students to leave Fairfield Public Schools with communicators, collaborators, critical thinkers, innovators, responsible citizens, and goal-directed resilient learners. So, if we believe those things are what we want to measure and those things are important to us, how do our graduates, how do our students who have completed a year of college tell us we're doing in regard to those six skills? Which areas are we doing well at and which areas need more attention?
So, the majority of the questions that are asked on the survey of our graduates are posed on a Likert scale and from one to five. And this breakdown is provided to us from Futuristics. This is not something that we designed. So, through the data analysis that is done through this company, what they deem as extremely favorable response would be any response where the average was above a 4.0. And then you can see the rest of the breakdown here. So, 3.7 and above fell in the favorable range and less than 3.4 would be less favorable or unfavorable. So, just to go along with the theme of the vision of a graduate, what we did is we looked at the indicators that matched each element of the vision. So, under the collaboration banner, where we saw group work and teamwork skills extremely favorable, as well as treating others with respect, as well as the respective diversity falling very favorable. Under communication, we looked at the writing skills and listening skills and saw that they came back as extremely favorable, and the oral presentation, public speaking skills ranked as favorable. In critical thinking, there was one question that applied directly to problem-solving and thinking skills. They came out as very favorable, reading skills extremely favorable, and study skills favorable. Under responsibility, there were a couple of these social aspects that were measured among many. To accept responsibility for your choices is very favorable. To accept citizenship responsibilities came out neutral. Innovation, research skills favorable, thinking creatively is neutral, and computer technology skills is neutral. And then there were a number that we felt aligned with the goal-directed resilient learner. You see them all listed here, ranging to, from unfavorable to make informed consumer money management choices, all the way up to very favorable for making informed educational choices. I think some of the ones that you see there, such as handling social pressure effectively and making informed healthy lifestyle choices, you know, that came out in the neutral range, tied directly to a lot of the work that we've been doing lately around our social and civic expectations. We'll talk more about that in a second.
So, we also highlighted for you some of our academic areas that were areas to celebrate that our graduates indicated extremely favorable ratings for some of those academic areas that you see highlighted as art, English, family, consumer science, music, science, and social studies. Our extracurricular program specifically with regard to athletics was extremely favorable as well. And other areas in our academic group that we want to investigate a little further that came out neutral, world language, physical education, resource room, more known for us as our learning center supports, and technology education all came out as neutral. So, those are areas that we want to do a little more work with and talk with our seniors and some of our graduates as to their rating of this group. In summary, we look at our six indicators, or our six skills, rather, from our vision of the graduate. The collaboration, communication, and critical thinking, favorable to extremely favorable. And as you know now, these three skills are measured as indicators on our academic expectations as well for both high schools. So, we think we're doing a really good job there. Responsibility and innovation came out neutral to very favorable. Goal-directed resilient learners, unfavorable to very favorable. Both Greg and I, in talking about the results of the survey and planning this presentation, really wanted to thank our parent community, those of you that were involved in our work last year in planning our vision of the graduate. This particular skill came directly really from the parent community. They were the ones that said to us, you know, we need our students, we need our children to be more resilient learners. So, we recognize here that there's some, there's some work to be done here, too.
So, as we took a look at the results and knowing that there has been a tremendous amount of change and a lot of work from a lot of folks just in the last few years alone that maybe some of the graduates from 2016 and years prior would not have experienced, but, but we do feel, you know, there's still some really, some valuable information that we have to address here. So, under the career and exploration and planning area, both schools have implemented career days where we invite folks from local community, even including some alumni, to talk with our students about opportunities that we have that might be available for them. We invited alumni in separate occasions to address classes based on professional careers. And of course, we both have, not indicated here, but we both have very active career and college centers in the high schools, which I think traditionally have done a lot more in terms of supporting students in their college process, but, but they do exist and we have, we both have, you know, great staff in there. So, but that is, having that resource is really helpful and can help us along this area as well. Along the informed consumer money management, I know this, this was a topic of discussion just recently when we were talking about our graduation requirements. And one of the things through that discussion that led to some conversation on our part was with the increase in the requirement for health, there's been a lot of talk about how we can use that opportunity to include this topic in particular for our students as before they leave high school. And along those lines, the increased promotion of the financial literacy class. Under the areas of responsibility and citizenship, and you know, again, these were, these were all sort of in the neutral range. There weren't many that really fell in the unfavorable range or the less than favorable range. But I think that the work that we've both done at both high schools around our social and civic expectations and the use of the advisory time to focus on these areas, and I just want to echo what Mr. Ebling mentioned about the parent feedback on the idea of resilient learners. I mean, that, that came through clear from the graduates as well. And we all know that as a, as an institution in education, we are dealing more and more with students who are struggling with the social pressures that exist, the college placement procedures, and all of the things that, that they are facing from that regard. They're seeing more and more stress, feeling more stress, and, and that's a lot of the work that we've been working on with our, with our support staff.
So, our final word, present feelings of years at high school are very favorable. And again, Greg and I talked while we were planning this about Thanksgiving, and when we had almost 200 graduates come back, alumni come back to visit their high school, they obviously had very positive feelings about it and wanted to share in their experiences since they left us. So, thank you for hearing us tonight. We'll stay for some questions, and Mr. Cummings said he would handle all of those, so. We'll stay for some questions, and Mr. Cummings said he would handle all of those, so.
Thank you.
One reason why I'm upset that you presented later, I was going to invite the students to stay. I thought they would be, would have enjoyed hearing that.
They had mentioned it, too, when we talked to them before the meeting.
Will you be sharing this with the student body at all at the schools? Or access to it, promoting it, that it's occurred?
We could talk about that. We hadn't thought about that at this point.
To the board, any comments, questions? Mr. Peterson, follow up, Ms. Asa.
Thank you. I have, I have several questions. First of all, this is not the first year that we've, we've done this survey, correct? And so, I didn't see any information about how we are progressing longitudinally. Is this an improvement from previous years overall in terms of college readiness? Are there, are there areas that we significantly dropped off on?
It's actually pretty representative. There's been, it's been pretty steady. The, you know, a couple of fluctuations here and there, but, you know, they tended to be anomalies for one year, and then it would, you know, have like a course correction. So, you know, a lot of it, in the early years of, of doing this study, we were having a really difficult time getting our graduates to, to actually respond. The company that, and first of all, let me say, there, there aren't many companies that do this, believe it or not. We really tried to look to find some responsive folks with newer technologies, if you will. And it was really only starting in two thousand sixteen that we started implementing the, an online option for our students to be able to respond that way. Everything else had been done by old-fashioned snail mail and paper, so we had rates much lower than that twenty-seven percent.
Well, frankly, I think that twenty-seven percent is a, is a great rate. You seem to have kind of a critical mass of students responding, which is, which is, which is great. I was also a little curious about the methodology. It was difficult, given the materials that we were provided, and were searches on the website to find this exactly. So, how did, did we design, did we have input in terms of the questions that were? Did we, did we design the questions?
We did not design them directly. The, the gentleman who owns the company came to meet with, it was at the time, Mr. Coyne and myself, and we, he gave us some banks of questions, and, you know, we, we identified a few key areas that we wanted to emphasize a little bit more than what was being offered, particularly in that social emotional area and our guidance areas, but they were pretty much his bank of questions.
And I guess that leads into my next question, which is, we were also provided with percentile statistics. So, are those compared to other districts in the state, in the country, and against those specific questions?
We are not given any specific information regarding which schools those are, so, you know, it's based on, it's based on whoever he employs him.
It's based on the schools that he uses for his survey.
Do we know how many of those are?
I think about four hundred, right?
That sounds right.
So, it's a valid number, because some of these, you know, I keep seeing, you know, you characterize, well, I guess they characterize as exceptional, or neutral, or somewhere in between, but a lot of these percentiles are low. You know, the one for informed consumer money management, we're in the nineteenth percentile. And again, that was, that was neutral, but that kind of implies that eighty-one percent of schools surveyed do it better than we do, or at least, we do that in the, in the eyes of our students. And some of these, some of these are bad. I mean, in terms of clearly communicated expectations to students, we are in the third percentile. But that's, but that's probably, you know, classified as a, as a neutral result.
So, I think it is really hard for us to really know what to make of those percentile ranks when we're not really given any information about who they are, the sizes of those schools, the levels of the students that, the response rates of those schools. So, so we, we see those, obviously, and we take note of them, and, you know, it's part of our process of analyzing. But, but I'm, I'm not sure that we would pinpoint a single one of those pieces of datum and, and to make a major change in our programming. So, so it's, it's all part of the, the general information for us.
I, I, I get that, but isn't that sort of what we're paying for? I just.
We're not paying much.
In, in any event, and I just, again, seeing some things characterized as neutral where, you know, you know, ninety-seven percent of the schools surveyed do it better than we do. It was, except, it was, it was bracing to see that. I guess my other major question about this, so I have two major others. Did we get any statistically significant results from kids who did not go to college? I mean, it seems like the survey is aimed entirely at kind of, are you prepared for college?
We did have students that participated in the survey that did not go to college. However, you're correct, most of the questions that we ask are about that, with the exception of some things that are life skills or money management, et cetera. So, the majority of the students that responded to the survey are in college.
Well, I understand that the majority of the students that attend our district also.
That's, that's correct.
So, I entirely understand that point. Is there a reason why the Ward and Ludlow students were surveyed a year apart? I would think that that would have a material impact on the results.
Yes. That was Clara Claire. The, the target is for one year after graduation. Unfortunately, in the summer of two thousand seventeen, the, the students that were identified from Ludlow were the recent graduates of two thousand seventeen. So, frankly, those are null and void, because they're really, they're responding to questions about college that they haven't even experienced yet. So, so that's why we, we decided to use the two thousand sixteen results from Ludlow from, well, we, we waited the following summer, and then responded, and then we surveyed that group of students. We couldn't survey two thousand seventeen again because they had already done all the questions.
That's fair, but that's not, that's not practice. Practice would be.
It's not practice, right.
One year out.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Asa.
Okay. So, I just have a couple of observations and comments here. Looking at the background information slide, we have a class size of seven hundred and thirty-three, and it appears to me that eighty-four percent of the respondents, which equates to twenty-four percent of the whole class, were AP or honors, and that only four percent of the whole class, or roughly fourteen and a half percent of the responders, were non-AP or honors. So, I understand why Mr. Peterson says, you know, on a survey, twenty-seven percent is actually pretty good. I get that, but I'm a little concerned on, is it an equal representation of the student body? Because I, I'd be curious to know, out of these, you know, AP and honors students as a percentage of the whole class, is that close to what, like, do we think that the majority of AP and honors students respond, you know what I mean? Like, where, where they lie? And I'm just worried that it kind of, it's interesting information. I just don't know how valuable it is. And based on what you said earlier, we don't really know what we're comparing it to with this company and everything. So, you know, while I think this is an interesting survey, I, I'm, I'm just curious as to, is there really much merit to it? And I think you answered, we're, we're not really creating our direction for this district based off of these answers. Is there anything we can do about this to maybe shorten the survey? I mean, it, it seems very long. And I know as an adult, when I get a survey, you know, I'm quick to try and do it whenever I can, but after you get to a certain point, you know, you kind of give up. So, I'm wondering, have you gotten any feedback from students that maybe didn't participate as to why?
I can't say directly that we've gotten any feedback from them as to why they don't participate. And the other point to that is, we've never approached a company to say, you know, here's what we're paying you, can we pay you less to shorten the survey, which might be something to do. I think you make an excellent point. We're always being hypercritical, so we look for these things that students might say to us, you know, not as well-prepared in this area so that we could focus on them, but to change the course of our direction, we wouldn't use all of this data just to do that.
I mean, because I go, I go to the summary page where we have goals-directed resilient learners, and our range is unfavorable to very favorable.
That's right.
To me, that means nothing. Like, I, I just don't understand how that's helpful. So, I, I guess I ask you, as the two headmasters, do you feel that this is a worthwhile endeavor to take on? And if you do, but you have reservations, are there things that maybe you can talk to the company about modifying to make it more helpful? And if you don't feel that it is, I'd love your opinion.
Well, in regard to the response rate, I mean, yeah, in all honesty, there are, you know, in the past years, we've, we've done climate surveys here in the district with, you know, students, I mean, we, we have them all captive, so we, in the fact that, you know, we, you know, they, they all take the survey. But in all honesty, some of the parent rates are much lower than twenty-seven percent, you know, for things like that. So, I think, I think there's an inundation of, of surveys, so that, you know, people, I think, have similar responses to, to what you mentioned. I think what this gave us is validation of, of a lot of the hard work that we do. I mean, there's, when you look at, especially, you know, as Mr. Ebling had pointed out earlier, the critical thinking area, collaboration, I mean, those are, those are areas that we've been focused on for a long time, and, you know, even through the academic expectations exercise, now we're even codifying it even more specifically with the rubrics, so that that's, it's really helpful for us to know that, you know, we're taking steps in the right direction in those areas. It also shows certain trends, like, for instance, you know, in the area of technology, for instance, you know, the graduates from years past, you know, are basically telling us that, you know, along those areas, they, they're finding that in college, you know, they may have been more challenged than, than they expected to be, but a lot of that is, when it comes to technology, everything is progressing so fast. And just in what has, we've been done as a district in the last, you know, couple of years around some of the courses that we offer, you know, the one-to-one technology that's now, that's now offered, we're making advances there, so we know we're also putting our resources in the right areas that our graduates are telling us that we were not on. So, so it's validating in some ways, but also helpful just from the trend areas.
So, just one more follow-up. Have, have you ever considered utilizing maybe existing students or immediate alumni to try and help bump up this response rate, similar to how we do when we graduate college and former students call us for money? You know, something to that effect, though, where it can be part of a, you know, part of their schoolwork or whatever, to try and, try and increase this. And, and when I, when I say increase this, it seems like our response rate for AP and honors is, is pretty decent. I'm more interested in responses from the non-AP and honors students. And I think this, I, don't get me wrong, I think this, this is information, and we can do whatever we want with information, and this could be very valuable. But I'd just be curious to see if, if you, too, could maybe have some more input with the company on, on changing it a little bit.
Changing it up a little bit.
And, and maybe utilizing existing students or immediate graduates, like graduates from this year, with some sort of incentive tied to it, to try and reach out and say, hey, you know, maybe they'll respond better if it's a, if it's one of their classmates calling them and saying, hey, did you do this survey, or whatever. Just an idea.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Graber.
Um, well, just, I guess to kind of respond to Mr. Ace's concerns, as someone who had a member of the class of two thousand sixteen living under my roof, I harassed and stalked that alumni for weeks, and did the same to many of his friends. And they all are having a great college experience, they had really positive experiences in high school, so it's not as if there's something they don't want to report. I have a sneaking suspicion that many of them did not fill out, and I don't know what more could be done. I was sharing it with all of the parents, so I knew, did you know your child got this? I mean, this was a passionate cause of mine, and I don't think I did very well in getting the results, and I don't know what the answer is. So, just, I mean, maybe having students might be helpful, because parents did not seem to work.
We're not sure how that skewed our results, by the way.
You need to work on that. Ms. Lieber.
Uh, just a couple of comments. My hunch is that these are not statistically significant results, so I hate, I hate the idea of you guys spending too much time analyzing them, and agree, it's hard to know how to get these to be more robust. Twenty-seven percent is a great return rate, but it is not like normally distributed, so we can't really put that much weight in, in them. And also, I wouldn't even necessarily say we should pay less for a shorter survey. If, if a shorter survey got us more responses, it would be worth the money.
Yes, that's right.
But also, I think it's interesting to think of these results in the lens that they're disproportionately are more advanced students. So, our math, I'm not also very interested in the rank percentage, we don't really know what that means, but I think just, just the overall scores and their sort of confidence in their college mathematics level is a little lower. And it was sort of a trend, so I'd be interested to hear some thoughts on that. I know that's a persistent issue. And then, you know, I had to mention money management, put it not, and I'm so excited you included it, and I'll be even more excited to hear next year whether or not you think your efforts are fruitful in trying to promote more students to take it, because I know it's not always easy to motivate students to do like what we think they should do. And whether, and what changes you do make with the health courses and trying to find ways to incorporate some financial literacy in there, because, as you probably know, I really do strongly believe that it is a really critical piece to our young people being successful adults. And so, I was really excited to see that in there. And also, just really want to commend you that the three point nine six, very favorable for feelings of your high school years, is really great. And I can't imagine my high school would have had a rating like that, and that really is commendable. And I hope my first comment about statistically significant doesn't detract from my compliment, that that really is, I hope something you guys feel proud about.
Thank you.
That's all.
Ms. Max Canelli.
Okay. As you may or may not remember, this was the one single item in our district improvement plan that I was most adamant about keeping, preserving, pursuing, using as a vehicle for change, for reflection, et cetera. And what I have is the two thousand seventeen report, which was the Ward two hundred and seventeen page. So, I've seen something that has a far more robust reporting of data. And I'm saying all of this as a preamble to, can you please tell me very, you know, concretely, what's being done with this data to, because I couldn't agree more, that the three point nine six ultimately is extremely compelling. That said, we consider ourselves a top school district, which means there is room for improvement in all sorts of areas. For example, one thing that the rest of the board is not looking at, but I am, you know, something on the, the money management decisions, a fairly decent discrepancy between the two high schools on that one. There's also, for something like study skills, a tremendous discrepancy between those who label themselves as AP and those who label themselves college prep, which is no surprise. Inherent in the AP course is the pulling away of a lot of the scaffolding and the support, and the students are learning to manage their own time, manage their own studying to prepare for those assessments in a way that younger students or of different levels need more help. So, of course, college is a bigger than step up, but yet still, what more can we do to support that? But all over this report, you know, we're seeing one that's the amalgamation, the combination of the two schools together. And yet, when you look at the data separated by the two schools and separated among the three levels, there's a lot in here for people to chew over and look at, and say, what can we do better? I mean, I, I certainly appreciate we got the global look here, and I don't think a look at the two high schools side by side, because there, it, that was, when I did the comparison myself, it went back and forth, back and forth. There's no, there's definitely nothing in here consistent that says this high school needs to be the model for the other high school at all. It was really back and forth, and for whatever reason, I mean, that, that we don't know. But I definitely think there's a lot in here that I think is worth time investigating more, by level, by school, by skill, by department, some by staff, some by central office. And so, as I warned you, with that as a lengthy preamble, I'm hoping that between the three of you, and perhaps Mr. Cummings can start, what's being done with this?
I would say to you that essentially the work, and I apologize in advance if my answer seems ten-thousand-foot view, but we can go into more detail if the board wishes either now or at a future date. The essential work of the district at all levels is, is the continual improvement of classroom instruction. classroom instruction. You improve classroom instruction, you improve student learning. The primary means of doing that is, and this is happening at both high schools right now, as well as at all of our other buildings, is the examination of student work to see if the learning targets were achieved, and if, if yes, why, and if not, why, why not, and what can be done to further challenge students who've, who've achieved the learned targets. I mean, it's going back, in, in some ways, to education at its most simplest form. We have, we have strong curriculum in place throughout the district. We've spent a lot of time in the district focusing on the writing and implementation of that curriculum. We need to shift our focus to the instruction of that curriculum. So I would say that that is one of the major efforts across the district right now. Coupled with that is, and it's really just beginning at the secondary level, but that's the implementing, designing and implementing a strong intervention system. I want to be cautious here in that these are, these are linked initiatives, essentially, but, and, and I also want to be clear that when we talk about intervention systems, we're not simply talking about the student who is falling behind, but the student who is running ahead, and how do we best support them with differentiated instruction. That ties back to the idea of looking at what the students are producing, but it also talks about systems and structures that need to go into place to make sure that there is more opportunity for students to receive assistance when they do require it, specifically around things like study skills. And it would be in those populations of students that are at the, at the, and not at the AP and honors level, that would, that would probably most be apparent and needed. The other thing I'd say, is that, as a third major component of this work, is we are working, as you well know, to, to revitalize our curriculum, the implementation or the adoption of the vision of the graduate, the academic expectation, certainly now the graduation policy, is shifting our focus to a more, I would call it, more engaging and rigorous opportunities. We are behind, though, in, you know, one of the things I think about when I look at a survey of students who were in high school for four years, those, those students, that 2016 cohort is two years removed from the changes that have already begun to happen. They won't, you know, what happens to our current ninth grade class, never mind future classes, will be different. But we are working very much to build consistency across our two high schools, our three middle schools, and our 11th elementary, so that, and that comes from focusing back to improving instruction. It's, as you, as you know, it's work that never ends, but it's, it is the work.
Headmasters?
So I think that, you know, first of all, we share this with the faculty. So that's, you know, one of the things that we do explicitly, so that they get a sense of, you know, especially if, if you're sitting there as a member of a particular department. And, you know, we have shared some of the longitudinal data with them as well, so that they could see that any particular item is not, you know, is, is not just something that was, that was out of thin air or out of the blue as a, as an anomaly versus, you know, what they've seen consistently over the years from the surveys. So, so that they said, oh, well, our department is, you know, it's not ranking very high, they can see that that was a trend over a couple of years, and they can reflect on that. And we ask them to reflect on that, to think about what it is that, you know, why would our graduates be saying that? Some of the things that are really hard to pinpoint are, you know, as many of you have pointed out, the breakdown of the levels of the students who, who are responding. You know, some of them, you know, if you have a lot of students who are in AP and honors classes, they may have never experienced what it was like to be in a resource room or a learning center. So, so we have to take some of, some of these things into account regarding on their experiences. What we also know is that students who take many AP courses don't really have a whole lot of room in their schedule to take many elective courses. So some of the responses to those areas, you know, we might need to just look at, you know, critically and, and think about a little bit more closely. But what I do like is that a lot of this is stuff that we inherently are aware of. For instance, when, as many of you who have been around the board for a long time know that there was a run of years where we had a lot of cuts in technology. And, you know, there were areas that we just, you know, were not keeping up to date in, and I think we've done a lot of work in the last few years to, to make up for that, but that's reflected here, you know, in some of the things that they've identified for us. And, you know, the area that I think that Mr. Ebling and I have always been emphasizing in talking with central office and, and the PTAs and everyone else, is the need to really support our students who are struggling socially, emotionally, from anxiety and stress and all of that. And, and I think that's reflected here, too. So, all the work that's been done, the impact program, the, you know, we, we've increased the number of psychologists in the building just in the last couple of years, the emphasis of advisory, a lot of those efforts really are reflected in what the alumni have told us. So it's symbiotic, it's not necessarily because of this we're doing this, but it reflects the needs that we know and that we see, and helps support our efforts in those areas that we're doing, we're heading in the right direction. And if we see areas here that, you know, were, were a surprise to us, then we know we need to do better, like the financial literacy piece, for instance.
So, when I'm in college and my money runs out in March, and I call home and say, Mom, can you send more? And she says, no, I don't do very well on money management, and I'm going to blame my high school for that, because they didn't teach me how to do it. But there's, there's a lot of factors that probably go into that in all of these answers for each individual student who represents 27% of our population. So, we're not inclined, I'm not anyway, to make major shifts in what we do based on one data point. Are there things that we learn from each other, Greg and I, when we look at these survey results and say, why do you think you did really well in here, and why, why didn't I do so well in this area? So, we may share some ideas around those kinds of things that we, that we might want to improve upon in terms of what we're doing as a school individually or as a school district, when we talk with our central office as well. But I think, I think we have to keep it in perspective of what we're looking at here when we, when we decide if we're going to make changes.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up, I picked money management to, to poke out, because that's actually one of the ones that least bothered me, because to me, that's, there's quote, nothing quite like experiential learning, quite frankly. So that, that one phased me, actually, the least, because I certainly expected that one. But as I said, things like the, the study skills, the time management, the, the pressures or whatever, there, I would hope to, to actually see movement on some of these. And again, and we do have subgroup data in terms of by level. I would disagree with the contention from Ms. Lieber that this is necessarily disproportionate, until we saw how students self-identified as seniors, and I think this, maybe this is exactly in keeping with how students self-identify, in which case it is exactly proportionate. So I'm not convinced that it, that it is disproportionate in that regard. But, you know, while not a huge financial investment, it is one still, and I, I just, I know that the, the ridiculously large packet that I have, it does have things that I hope, boiled down, could actually lead to some definite change. Again, I'm going to use study skills as the example. How can we better support college prep students to have the study skills when they have the freedom that college comes? I mean, I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody.
Right.
But to actually set as a goal, I want to move the needle on that one, I, I just think it's a worthwhile discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one comment, if I may. I think one of the issues with, that every high school in America faces and has for many, many, many years, is at the moment at which it is probably the most pressing for our students to become politically active, to learn financial literacy, and, you know, have developed the maturity, both from the standpoint of, you know, having a better understanding of the world and seeing a lens beyond just, you know, the town of Fairfield and that there's a big world out there, that is at precisely the moment that they are the least interested in doing anything, because in the second semester of their senior year, you know, there's sort of like that vision of, boy, you know, I'm, I'm going to be gone soon, and, you know, I'm, I'm focused more on what my life is going to be like next year, rather than, you know, hearing those lessons that we want to impart to them just before they leave. I mean, obviously, those are, those are things that we need to start with them very early on, but, but there, that is a little bit of a conundrum, you know, in the whole senioritis thing, and, but we, we like to think that they stay really engaged with their classes right up to the last minute.
But that's also why we don't survey them senior year, correct? I mean, we're waiting till, till their freshman year, because then they're going to have the perspective on, okay, what am I actually ready for? I know, because I've, I've been asked by a few people, why don't we survey them as seniors, because they have no idea what they are, aren't prepared for exactly till they actually encounter it.
Right, and they need to experience, you know, they need to see where they fall compared to their peers, you know, as they go through their process. So I think that's, that helps inform them, because, you know, how can they judge their experience in high school if that's the only experience they've ever had?
Right.
So as they get to meet other people and create new circles, they have a sense of that better.
Agreed.
I was not really surprised by these survey results, having one senior in college now and a senior in high school. It kind of came out where I would expect it, just being a parent and being involved in the district and seeing, seeing these meetings. One thing that I would just ask for some feedback at some point about the extracurriculars, I'm guessing that maybe all athletes took the survey? Some of the scores just on clubs and student government and those types of things were lower than I would like to see, and I suspect that that may be tied to budget at some point, because over the years, very often, those line items do get the funding that maybe they, they need. So I'm just kind of putting it out there as something to, to think about, and, you know, feedback to administration and to the board.
I would just say, and this is, again, a tribute to the schools, but I had a different take on that athletics line, because I think that also gets to the core of school spirit. I don't think those are all athletes necessarily answering. I think it's people who had that respect for their school, and when you have that strong school spirit, again, I, I obviously know Ward a little bit better, but you see those fan, and I know they have a name, but those fan groups at the basketball games and at the football games, so that, that's where, when, when you have that sense of school connectedness, that absolutely translates to the academics. So I agree, that was a very powerful number.
And I agree with that, and I don't mean to, and I think that is definitely true, that even students that are not athletes, as mine weren't, definitely enjoy that aspect of it, and it's tied to school spirit. That said, having non-athletes who are in the arts and in drama club and stuff like that, you know, I just wonder if those scores would be different, if maybe we're investing differently. That's it.
And I would just add that, I think one of the greatest strengths of our schools is just the sheer variety of opportunity that the students have to participate in a number of clubs. So when you see something like student government being rated low, I think that what happens is that students get really invested in their class, like, you know, as, as juniors and seniors in, in organizing that. So they don't see the school-wide student government piece as a, as really an avenue that's, that's effective for them, you know, at least, you know, in these classes. But, but because they're involved in, you know, I mean, you name it, the Caroline House Club and the Digidaroo Club and, you know, coloring and all, all these different causes that are service-oriented, you know, that's where, you know, there might be some diffusion of where their interests are. They don't ask about, they don't ask specifically about all those different types of clubs, just sort of clubs in general.
For the board goal discussion, I'm not viewing this being a big discussion point, but we have had a lot of talk about facilities that directly tie back to the goal that we approved back in October, which I will read to you again. The Board of Education will explore and research to make a decision on or before June 30th, 2019, with BO action on all four of the following items. Implementing an inter-district magnitude and other program, relocation or renovation of Walter Fitzgerald campus, approach to early childhood center overcrowding, the desired comprehensive redistricting model to be utilized to resolve overcrowding and racial imbalance. We've been talking a lot about the ECC, but as we all know, these items are interconnected, and the decisions made about one can have an impact on the other. We're heading into budget season, January's going to be very busy, and I just wanted to get some feedback from the board on what information you need to, in order to meet this goal by June, how you want to go about getting that information? Do you think we need more meetings? Do you think we need a subcommittee? What information might you need from central office that they have not provided, just so we can give some guidance to staff, consultants, et cetera? So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but just wanted to have a open dialogue about it. Mrs. Gerber filed, I miss Picko.
Uh, well, I guess, my first question would be, where do things stand with Malone and McBroom? Because I think that plays a big part in any discussions we have moving forward, at least in terms of redistricting.
They have not started any heavy lifting as of yet. They were going back in and looking at all of the previous work they've done over the last couple of years to try and determine what they can actually utilize going forward for the spring.
Okay, well, I guess I would just say that, you know, until we have some sense of what their timeline is, I'm not sure how much we, as a board, can do, at least in terms of redistricting, since they're going to be bringing us redistricting ideas. I mean, we are not originating redistricting ideas. What?
I don't recall what direction we were giving for Malone and McBroom. I don't, I don't, I, I mean, I know they keep coming into the conversation, but did we arrive at definitive direction that we are looking for blank? And I apologize if I've just, if I'm drawing a blank on that one. What were we asking them for?
I thought they were coming up with redistricting plans.
They were, they are actually looking at all the work we've done before on redistricting. At least, this is my understanding of the discussions the board has had over the last year. That's why it's on this sheet listed for Malone and McBroom for April.
But prior to our, our looking at the principles, or?
Well, we already actually looked at those once before, like, within the last few months, but my understanding is, for racial imbalance, we must discuss redistricting. I mean, that, that's part of our racial imbalance plan by June, and that was part of the discussion now, was also looking at Mill Hill, you know, if that's, if we're advocating for the 504, how do all these buildings fit together? That's why on the planning sheet, we have to, ECC, for instance, that discussion tonight impacts the next couple of years. So it's looking at the whole big piece again. And I mean, I think that that's, I think that's the question, is how are we going to go forward? Because we've tried several different structures, from the Operational Effectiveness Committee, you know.
Well, I, I'm sorry, my, Malone and McBroom came from this handout that we have here, that we got at our last meeting at the table. And it says here, I'm looking at the timeline, it's January through April, May, boundary discussions, Malone and McBroom work.
But I didn't think they could, and I apologize for jumping in, but I didn't think they could move forward till we knew Mill Hill size. I did actually, I thought we were going to reexamine the, the principles, only because, as, I mean, Mrs. Gerber pointed out, on the work they did that on this most recent round, there were schools where it was, you know, 15 kids moved, 11, you know, that, was that an approach we supported or not? I guess, my thought point being, I thought the board was going to have more discussion on the direction given to Malone and McBroom.
Can I just jump in here, because that's what I was going to say, is that the last time we discussed this goal, we agreed to do everything together, not as a subcommittee. We had that conversation at this table, that we were not going to form a subcommittee, we were going to do it, the nine of us at this table, and that we were going to give a charge to Malone and McBroom. So like, the fact that it's on here again, should have been that we were going to give them a charge. Can I just say one thing, too? And just as a reminder, the board actually asked me two months ago if I'd already contacted them, and I said yes. That was at a board meeting. So, I mean, you asked me to do that, so I've, I've done that. I, I have not given them specific direction, and I think that's part of, the question is, what are we going to accomplish this spring, and what is it that the board wants to do with this huge goal?
Mr. Ace?
Mrs. Gerber, is it okay if I move forward with a question? Okay, so, I, I had mentioned at the previous meeting or the one before, that with regards to this, I think that this board does need to have a charge or a focus in moving forward with redistricting. And does that mean that we are redistricting simply for maximum facility efficiency and utilization, racial imbalance, a combination of both, one or the other? What is that? And I think what came with the discussion, as Mrs. Picko has said... And I think what came with the discussion, as Ms. Picko has said, is that we decided that we needed a, a discussion on this. And this, I don't think that this can be accomplished in a regular board meeting. So, the idea was floated out, as, as the chairman has said, do we form a subcommittee? Do we think, and I think that's why it's on here tonight, for us to discuss, what is the next step that we take so we can get to the point of this board deciding in a majority fashion, what is the direction that this board wants? And how are we going to start discussing and go about a redistricting plan, or hypothetical redistricting plan, whether it be short-term, long-term, whatever that may be? And my suggestion would be that we have a, a meeting or a, a special meeting, or whatever it is, a workshop outside of this forum. I, I have no drive to have another meeting. I, I don't want to have another meeting. But I think this topic is very important, and I think we could accomplish in maybe a couple hours on just this one topic. Because at the end of the day, we've talked about a district-wide magnet program, right? We've started the talks of Walter Fitzgerald. We're talking about ECC. So we're already started on these things, and they've been moving along in this process with this, you know, scheduled meeting. This idea of comprehensive redistricting model, you know, I've made my thoughts and feelings clear on this, but I think we owe it to the community for us to have a few different things. One is a meeting of the whole nine to start guiding what direction we're going to go into. And then we need to have, whether it be at that meeting or another meeting, public input. And from there, we decide, and we go to Malone and McBroom, and we say, we have decided, hypothetically, I'm not saying this is what it is, but hypothetically, we have decided that we need a district-wide redistricting plan. We need to incorporate the pre-K program, whether that means making ECC a one-location site in one of the buildings. But all of that is going to come from our discussions. It can't be at a regular meeting. So my suggestion would be that we all agree on the best way to move forward with that, you know, in a timely fashion, if that makes sense.
Mrs. Gerber.
Just to follow up on that, because I do, it's 10:15, and I know many people down here don't like to go on beyond 11:00. So, just to move things along, because we do have a lot more items on the agenda. I think we had discussed at one point having a second meeting in February. I think January's out. Obviously, we already have four meetings then. We have our town hall on Thursday. I don't think we want to add another meeting before Christmas, or between Christmas and New Year's. So we're talking about February. And we'd be talking about the second half of February. So, I think we should just try to figure out some dates. Maybe if Mrs. Vitale wants to send out an email to the board and get consensus on one or two dates that will work in the second half of February. And we will set that up as a special meeting, and we will have some time to decide the exact nature of that special meeting. But it will be a second meeting in February. We'll have plenty of time to discuss in advance and get the word out. And I would suggest doing it on a weeknight. I don't think weekends make sense. I don't think daytime makes sense, personally. But if other people have stronger feelings about it, please, you know, they should weigh in. And I think that's what we should do, and just to try to move this along.
Does anybody have any other thoughts they would like to share? Ms. Jacobson?
I concur with a lot of things that other board members have said. I think that, yes, we've done some preliminary work on ECC and Walter Fitzgerald, but I also feel like sometimes we're dealing with these issues in isolation and in silo from each other. And my vision on approaching this goal is to have more of a comprehensive master plan concept to this goal going forward. Understand that there's short-term and long-term objectives and strategies to meet those objectives, and the information that you've asked, what we're going to need on, to make some decisions on this going forward. And we kind of keep talking about it quickly. So I think that I agree that we're going to need to have a meeting solely dedicated to actually answer those questions, instead of still answering, asking questions. So I would concur that we need to take a more global approach to this, rather than a siloed approach to each of these items. It's one goal, but it has four parts, but as you mentioned, are interconnected. And I'm happy to have extra meetings as a meeting of a whole in order to get that going, and then decide from there how to take it from that, for that point.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
I completely agree with Mrs. Jacobson, and I think also that the timing of something like what Mrs. Gerber says of late, of late February, also gives us time to, well, it gives Dr. Jones time to pull more information to be ready for something like that, intra-magnet, intra-district magnet math, you know, academy, if we, you know, that, that information, they'll have time to do that, because right now, I'm sure it's quite budget-focused. But we need the information. We may know more at that point, you know, regarding Walter Fitzgerald possibilities. And, and I, I do recall that Malone and McBroom has been discussed. I just didn't think they had been charged with something. So contacting them, you know, what, having them ready, you know, enrollment numbers ready, et cetera. I just didn't think that we had given them a specific charge yet, and that was what my confusion had been about before. But I'd say even before, you know, this hasn't gone to the town yet, our, our schedule of board meetings. So, you know, easy to add that to that and work around, because I don't know when the next, the 2019 town hall meetings will be. But, you know, how all of that gets figured in, maybe that town hall meeting that gets added to this calendar needs to be in close proximity to the meeting Mrs. Gerber references, you know, at the end of February. I, I don't know, because that would then put these two very close.
Well, why don't, can't we have a town hall meeting about our board goal?
I, I don't disagree, but at some point, we also need a good couple of hours of just...
I think that we need to sit down, because even tonight, we were, we were presented with, with information about putting the ECC with McKinley, and what that would mean, and how that would affect the racial imbalance. That, to my recognition, has never been discussed at this table before. And if you take that and you run with it, what does that mean? I think there's a lot of different scenarios and ideas that have been thrown out there that we've never really talked about at length, because of this forum to some extent. Now, as I said, the only reason to put this on was really to have this discussion saying, this is...
No, thank you.
This is what we need to do. Going into the holidays, I totally agree about scheduling a meeting, what it's going to look like. I think it needs to be a little bit more of a free flow of ideas than, you know, me managing all of us. I don't want to have to recognize you to speak and then recognize you, and really just have a public meeting that's a safe place for free flow of information, just to kind of brainstorm. And, and think about how we're going to engage the public. I didn't put the town hall meetings on the calendar for exactly that reason. I think that maybe we want to place them strategically as we move forward, and we know where we are, so we can engage the public. We also may want to think about a communication plan. This is very serious work that has, you know, people are going to get emotional about it. We want to be as transparent as possible, get as much input as possible, and make sure that we have a plan going forward, so we're bringing everybody along with us. So that is something else, just to put it out there for you to think about. It may be something that we haven't done before as we prepare for this meeting in February, because it's going to be here before we know it. Ms. Jacobson.
Just one last comment about Malone and McBroom. I wouldn't want them to move forward with actual work on scenarios without input from the board in terms of what we may want included or not included. I'm not really sure I'm understanding what they're doing right now, but before we spend a lot of money on their time, that we may not be going in that same direction. So just making that point.
Yeah, I can, I can clarify that. So the question was asked of me, can they use any of the work, or are they going to have to completely start over? And there were some differences of opinion around the table. So I reached out to Malone and McBroom, let them know this is part of the board goal, and if they could please go back in and look at the work they've done over the last two years, and to be able to affirm that we're not going to have to pay $35,000 or $40,000 to redo all of the work they've done before. And they were able to validate, yes, they're going to be able to, to utilize some of that work, but they're going back and looking at our district. Because really, quite frankly, they work with so many school districts. Once they're done with us, last year, I'm sure they put all of our stuff aside, and, you know, they, they move on to their next district. So that's, that's all we've asked of them to this point, until we give them direction.
And I think depending on what plan people might be brainstorming, there might be just specific information about a certain area of town, that maybe you just want more data from them that they can provide. So that's...
And to your point, I think, sorry, I think we're looking at adding two meetings for this reason. If you're talking about a brainstorming, that's with, now that's giving staff direction, as opposed to expecting them to guess what we're going to bring up as topics and have the information ready for us. So I think, if you're talking about a February and a March, February, what you're, you know, free flow of information, here's what we need, no, wait, we don't really need that. But, and then another, which is getting more down to, here's what we're thinking. We're now narrowing options down. Our, our plan is, is taking shape. I'm, I don't know the scheduling of it, but to, I agree with your vision, and I think to implement it, we are going to need two.
And it's hard, because Mill Hill, we still don't know what's happening with that. So, you know, we're, we're trying to make these big decisions without some vital information. And while we're waiting for some of that information, it might be a good time just to kind of hash out some of these ideas, you know, short-term, long-term, really like dream wish, you know, 25, 30, 50 years from now. And as we're having this discussion, the town is also having Strategic Planning Committee. There's just a lot going on. And I think that we're having the discussion, we might as well just have it, because what I would hate to happen is us to move forward, be at the table, about to vote on a plan, somebody comes from the public and says something, and we're like, hmm, what about that? Like, let's just put the time in. Hopefully, it won't be more than a couple meetings. Have the conversation, and hopefully, you know, as we learn more from other town bodies, have a clearer path to where we're going. So I will ask Ms. Brown to kind of throw some dates out there for February, early March, weeknights. I know Saturdays, weekends might be hard, but I'm going to throw a Saturday in there also, because everybody has different schedules. Some people are free during the day, some people aren't, and we'll see where we land. It may be that all nine of us cannot be at these meetings. So we will go with the meetings that have, you know, the most people there. We won't be taking any action at these meetings. We'll be saving those for our regular meetings. And that's it. Any last comments? Ms. Asa?
I would just echo that Mrs. Gerber's recommendation of a, of a weeknight, I think, maybe an earlier start time than we normally do, like 6:00, is a great idea. And just throwing it out there, this spring, I will not be available Thursday nights.
Ms. Picko?
I want to echo too, both what Mrs. Gerber and Mr. Asa said. I do think it's very important that all nine of us are together to have these conversations, and I would prefer a weeknight. I too am not available on Thursday nights. Because it is such a monumental decision for these four actions, I, I think we all need to be together for this.
That is, that is definitely the goal, but just judging from our trying to schedule special meetings last February, to accomplish this, pretty much the same conversation. We had a very tough time getting all nine of us. So I'm just putting it out there as, you know, the ideal is nine, but if we can't get nine, we, we're going to need to move forward, because we have, we need the time to make these decisions. Obviously, I put the Saturday out there, just by some sheer, you know, miracle, all nine of us, Saturday happens to be the best date. Not tied to anything, just, you know, going to gather the information of the board and see where we land. Okay, new business, first reading of policy 5141.21, students, administration of medication in the school halls. Ms. Maxicanelli?
Yes, so this is in response to state statute changes. The one thing that was not included in your packet, and I apologize for not noticing ahead of time, because then I would have sent an email to the board. But what was not clear in your packet is, what was the language of the previous policy? What you are looking at is in total, the new policy language. So you don't know what has been changed, and a tremendous amount has. But I will still, or I can take the direction from the board. I may just send you the link to it, so that you can see it for yourself and save the paper, and maybe, Dr. Jones, it can go out in the Friday packet for anyone who wants it in that form. But that is, in fact, missing from the packet. So what you're looking at is the text, voted out of policy, in response to state statute changes. We did a lot of cleaning up, clarifying, arguing over headings, few good comma debates. But, again, as always, I invite questions, preferably in advance of the meeting, but there's that, oh, I apologize. Some, the other urgency for getting me questions in advance is that it's possible that I would need to ask Jill Mitchell to give me guidance. I told her that I did not think she needed to be here at the meeting to help us with this. And if it turns out that there are a lot of questions, I would need to know that ahead of time, because if it, it was arduous enough, she may choose to just come and address them at the board table.
Anybody have any questions or initial comments on this policy? Okay, thank you. I need a motion that the Board of Education approves student participation in the RIASEP survey. Ms. Picko, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. Dr. Jones, winning.
We're asking for approval of the RIASEP survey. It is a little, the timing is a little bit different, and that just has to do when Fairfield Cares asked us to actually put it on the agenda. And just as a reminder for the board, we did send you a lot of information, just for those of you that weren't as familiar. But the first regional survey was done in 1985. In 1994, they switched to the Search Institute Survey, that's what it's actually called. And it has been given to all of the towns in this region, with the exception of Easton, since the 80s. So it's become very routine. That's why we felt like, just to be able to read and approve it, we could actually move forward with that. We have used the survey to help us with our health classes and some of our planning. Fairfield Cares obviously uses that. And along with that, we would say that, you know, it's a long survey, but we get some really great information back about our youth. So, we do feel like it's a good survey. We have an opt-out, and we used to not send the form home, but we do have that now that actually goes home. And our statistics aren't great as far as keeping the data about how many opt-out. Some buildings keep it really well, some don't, but we know it's 1% or less. It's very, very, very few that actually opt out of the survey. And it's targeted by who, who actually takes the survey.
Any questions?
I just want to give a quick note that just with my work with Fairfield Cares and Positive Directions, I'm going to abstain from the vote, just to recuse myself.
That the Board of Education approves student, any members of the public like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, moving forward. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approves student participation in the RIASEP survey. All in favor? Abstentions? Raise your hand. Approval of minutes that the Board of Education approve the special organizational and regular minutes of November 13th, 2018. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Lieber. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 9-0. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of things. First of all, our winter concerts are coming up, so Candlelight at Ludlow is on the 20th, Carolina will be on the 18th. We always look forward to those. I feel like they're kind of highlights for us. If you haven't seen any, anything that's been on, like Twitter, but it's been really fun to watch the high schools using virtual reality as part of our next-generation science standard. So, they do have a whole set of the virtual goggles. So, we probably need to bring them sometime before a board meeting, and just let the board have a trial to see, just to see how they're utilizing new technology. And both of our, in our secondary schools, have innovation spaces now, and they're really using those spaces to bring different, different subject areas together to collaborate, and to collaborate in very different and innovative ways. Also, just an update on Dwight. We've had a lot of challenges this year, obviously building challenges, but we're excited that Room 10 has been restored. The Health Department has checked it out for us. We also wanted staff to tell us they felt good about the room, so they did a walkthrough, make sure they felt good about it. We were working on getting that restored. I don't believe as of today, it's back in motion, and that just means figuring out what's going to go in there, because they had moved the class out to another classroom. I don't think that classroom wants to move again. So they'll probably make it the lab, which is what the other class was originally. The bathroom work is also completed. They did the smoke testing, that was all clear. So we'll be looking forward to get the wall rebuilt, get their restrooms back open. So Dwight should be back in good shape. And just as a reminder on Room 10, we do, obviously, it was that fiberboard wall that had become wet from the condensation, when the air unit was really low and it was very humid. So that whole wall had to be replaced with new drywall. For Mill Hill, it is just a very basic update on there. From Sal's perspective, it is, he feels like it is on track again, and that the architect is ahead of schedule. So we shall see, but that, that was good news. We are very hard at work on the budget. We were, I mentioned that for the PTAC update, this was up this week, it was last night, for the PTAC update. But the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance are each holding their own budget meetings. So just to make sure everybody is aware of that, that is a change. So we will be presenting, you know, to both of those bodies separately. And last but not least, just the Ludlow and the Ward game, football game, obviously. That was a big change to play the night before. It was an excellent game, outstanding crowd. excellent game, outstanding crowd. It was probably the coldest football game I've been to in a long time, and I was not dressed appropriately. I came straight from the office. It was not smart on my behalf, but just the spirited, you know, and just the great kind of spirit of it all, and having the cheerleaders and dance all out there together at halftime was great. So that's all for me.
I just want to follow up just to confirm, because at our, I believe it was our last meeting, we were told that Mill Hill might not meet the June 30th deadline, so we had an entire discussion about shifting our entire waterfall schedule. So that is now, I'm, where did that come from, that we were not going to make June 30th?
It's come from the people that have been on that committee, and I don't really understand, I don't know if Mr. Collins does either. I don't know, Ms. Gerber, do you have any insight to why it would have switched?
Well, no, except I thought that, that the actual quote was that staff was concerned that we weren't going to make the June 30th deadline.
That sounds right, but I'm not positive.
Right, and I wasn't sure, so I thought that that was Mr. Collins and Mr. Morabito.
It's really Mr. Morabito, but that's talking to all the people that are involved in the project.
Right, but then when I was at the last Mill Hill meeting, Mr. Morabito said he thought it was going to be okay for June 30th, as of now. I mean, obviously, a lot can change between now and then, but he, because I know he wasn't at the meeting when that came up, and when I saw him at the Mill Hill Building Committee, I asked him, and he said, no, I think, you know, as of now, they're actually moving along. Silver Petricelli was getting the work in, and, you know, obviously, once it starts going to the other town bodies, then it's anyone's guess, but the initial work, his understanding, as he conveyed it to me at the meeting that was two weeks ago tomorrow, was that things are fine.
Yeah, and that's where he is right now. That's why I'm, that's why I'm reporting that tonight. It is back on track. So only if, from his perspective, if it gets hung up going through the bodies.
Okay, and I'm only raising it, because obviously, I know dates can move, but we did have that whole conversation about changing our entire waterfall schedule, so you see no need for us to continue that conversation.
I think we're going to be watching it all spring long, and I don't think anybody has any idea if we're going to hit June 30th. That's what I truly believe. So I just report what is reported to me, because I don't go to those building meetings, and I think there, which anybody knows, there are lots of different factors that go into these projects.
So to the chair, hopefully, we'll keep tabs on if we need that discussion to happen, but right now, we don't need to, today.
From what I'm hearing, from the superintendent, from the committee liaison, and from brief conversations with the architects, we are on track. I have not spoken to members of the Building Committee themselves, but I think at this point, we should not be looking to rework the Capitol waterfall. Mrs. Gerber, I have a question for you. Just what schedule, are they working on the initial timeline that was presented when the Building Committee was first approved, or did Colliers kind of rework it, the schedule, just so I know?
I will have a better sense after tomorrow, the Building Committee is meeting. So they did receive a presentation from Silver Petricelli at the meeting two weeks ago, where they had, they actually had four schemes. They had two 504 plans plus a 441 and a 378, you know, and that was a basic drawing, so obviously, a lot more work has to go into it. They did go ahead and ask them to do more detailed work on the 378 and the 441, because there were some questions about the two different 504s. And I believe that those will be discussed at tomorrow's meeting. So I will have a better sense then as to exactly where we are, because to be quite honest with you, there were quite a few different timelines that were floating around, based on, you know, going back all the way to last winter and spring, when this was first going around the first time with the initial funding request. So I'm hesitant to say which timeline we are on right now, only to say that the plan is to try to get to the other town bodies as soon in the New Year as they possibly can. And obviously, everyone is well aware of the budget meetings that will be coming to the other town bodies. When those meetings are, I believe that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the RTM have all of their 2019 regular meetings scheduled. Obviously, this project will have to be approved at a regular meeting, so everyone has those dates and knows where they are, and I think it's just a matter of waiting. And I do know that Mr. Morabito did say to me at the last meeting, that, you know, he talked to Mr. Quinn about, you know, would you be able to get this on the Board of Selectmen agenda as soon as it is ready to go? And he said, yes, he believed he would. So that's, again, as of now, obviously, things can change. If anything changes as of tomorrow night's meeting, I will be happy to give you any updates, but that's kind of where we are for now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones? Okay, committee and liaison reports. Before we get into that, the new committee liaison sheet is in your packet, or you should have gotten it. A few changes. Mr. Asa is now handling Department of Health, placing Ms. Pico. Mr. Peterson is on Holland Hill Building Committee. Mr. Dwyer is now doing special projects, and Mr. Asa and I are on CES. Also, I have created a, as my role as chair, have appointed Ms. Jacobson as a liaison to just the General Assembly. Right now, with everything that's changing at the state level, we don't really know what's coming down the pike. I don't know if it really needed to be a bylaws change, and that, you know, it may just be specifics to this year. I know that the superintendent speaks to our state delegation, but she has a whole school district to run, so I think it would just be beneficial to our board, just to be getting updates, and some things may be specific to what just the board wants to take a focus on. And I wanted to have a formal avenue for us to get reports, and given all of Ms. Jacobson's work at the state level, she seemed like the perfect choice. So thank you for that, and we look forward to updates in the future. So we'll start with Ms. Pico.
Wednesday, September 19th, is the annual SEPTA Cookie Walk here at the Board of Ed offices. Come down and get a batch of cookies. I'm baking this weekend.
Dr. Jones submitted, and I think our Friday packet, some details about the advertising, so I won't read off everything that was in there, but if anyone has any questions, and it's my understanding that Dr. Jones has submitted to the Policy Committee to decide whether or not you guys think it warrants a policy, or whether or not you think it's okay to remain in the regs. Your face is suggesting otherwise.
I'll follow up on that.
Yeah. But if anyone has any questions about it, happy to discuss.
Tomorrow night, both the Ludlow and Mill Hill Building Committees are meeting. My understanding is that Ludlow will be fairly brief. They've completed all of the items on their punch list, so my greatest and fondest hope is that we will be told that they are going to maybe perhaps meet once in January, since it is their December meeting. They do have to set the meeting agenda for all of 2019, but I believe as of now, the plan is, and I will reconfirm with Mr. Donald, and I will let Mrs. Vitale know, but as of now, I am hopeful that either the January 8th or the January 24th meeting, Mr. Donald will come to us to approve the closeout of that project. But I will keep everyone posted, and then, as I said, Mill Hill is meeting tomorrow night, and I will keep everyone updated as to what, how that's going over there.
Any questions? Okay, Sherman Building Committee, they were moving forward for their kiss and go line. They had it all mapped out at the back of the school. They met with town bodies, and the police said, no, you need to have it on the side. So they are revisiting that, and unfortunately, you know, where that kiss and go lane is, sort of impacts other renovations to the school. So that's where they are. They are moving forward. I think they did kind of come up with a plan, and I will keep you posted on that. PTAC met last night, the presentation from the Bike Commission, and Mary Hoag spoke about just sustainability in town, and ways that schools should become green leaf schools, and a lot of new initiatives with that. Their PTAC Council website is being upgraded and moving forward, so I encourage you to check that out, and they are preparing for just their budget workshop in January in preparation for the town and the education budget to come out.
So Board of Health, the first meeting I attended, there was no quorum, so it lasted two minutes. The meeting on Monday, this past Monday, just one thing to note, the Health Director did mention the same thing that Dr. Jones mentioned regarding Dwight, so I did, you know, ask about that. Nothing different than what was given to us tonight.
Just to make the board aware that in policy, we are starting to talk about our homework policy in Fairfield, and this is something being generated by the policy members that we wanted to take a look at, look at other districts, have a conversation about it. Dr. Jones, we were pleased that she was able to get some administrator input, so we have some of their feedback on things that they would be, especially open to us having a discussion about. And so I will be probably referencing this as many times as I can in the hopes that, that town, I mean, it just, that wanting the public aware that we're taking a look at this. We're not looking to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And on the other hand, when in the, considering how much meeting time and budgetary allocation we've made to things like social emotional learning, the social emotional health of our students, to not have any conversation about homework, I think is missing a significant piece, and it could be that we change nothing, but the conversation is going to be taking place. So if there are any board members who have any feedback, any thoughts of any informal nature, obviously, you're welcome to come to a policy meeting or to send me anything that you have. I'd be very interested to hear it, because we will be having that conversation, especially while Ms. Deasy is out. We're looking at that, and the special needs policy regarding food allergies. Those are the two things that we are discussing in the next couple of months until her return, and then perhaps more than that, but we just wanted to put out there that the homework policy is being discussed.
All right, a couple of things. Board of Finance, we met before the Board of Finance a couple of weeks ago up at H. Metzrichson, which was, which was fine. They are looking at upgrading that clubhouse and the course, so that was an interesting discussion. They asked us several questions about the first quarter budget, largely about staffing, all the same questions that Dr. Jones and Ms. Muncell had answered before. They also asked a lot of questions about the Ward Turfield, which is a big topic. Fortunately, I think that we had only good news for them. That was great. I was also, as mentioned, I took over the Holland Hill Building Committee from Nick. Mr. Asa, they said nice things about you. It was great. It was actually very interesting. We got a tour of the, of the construction. It looks like it's proceeding very well, as I understand that they'll be trying to move students in after the break. I believe you said K through 1, and the music room may be ready, from what I, from what I saw. So it was very exciting. They did have some issues apparent, some parents, I guess, had complained about issues of possible air quality in the school, and so they have commissioned a study for that. And they also found some asbestos in, behind a wall in the all-purpose room, which they are, you know, not entirely unexpected and working to remediate, but those are the big issues. Their next meeting is actually on Thursday. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend because we will be here in our Board of Ed Town Hall meeting.
Going to the public? Any public comment?
Open board comment?
Open board comment, sorry. Open board comment. Sorry, Ms. Vertelli, one second. Ms. Maxum Canelli?
I just wanted to put out a plug, since I know that many of the RTM districts in town are trying to have meetings regarding the strategic plan, the point being, schools, while it's not the school strategic plan, they, schools are certainly, and the education of Fairfield are certainly referenced in that plan, and I just wanted to put out to the board, and if any Board of Ed reps are listening on Fair TV at home or in the next couple of days, I know I contacted the Ward PTA email blast about, could they please include the link to the survey in that PTA email blast? Because it's not just parents that are being asked, it's also a component that the students are being asked for their input on their vision for Fairfield. So just putting out my plug, that the more ways people are seeing a vehicle to answering this survey, and that PTA email blast is just a very easy one and logical one, that I'm hoping people will think about doing that in their schools.
Is that something that can be broadcast, so all the PTAs send that out in their weekly?
They presented.
They presented.
They presented.
Actually, they came at the last meeting.
To the PTA Council.
Yeah, and some PTAs are doing their own, this is not, it's supposed to be open board comment, we're not supposed to be discussing, but they, they're having their own meetings, a lot of the PTAs also, but I can put it out there on the PTA Council Liaison, and I will just ask them.
That'd be great, yeah.
And again, just hoping if Board of Ed reps are listening at home, that they'll consider, if they, if they haven't already, if they'll consider putting it on their email blast.
Just wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday season and happy new year till our next meeting, to our staff and students and all of you.
And congratulations to Ms. Deasy and her husband on their new baby boy, if she's home watching.
I'm sure.
Sorry, I had an actual thing I had prepared to read, so it kind of comes as a downer after that. I do wish everybody a happy holiday, though. I want to talk a little bit about screen time. I would encourage the board, the administration, and parents in general, to take note of a landmark $300 million study funded by the National Institutes of Health that's examining how screen time impacts children's development. Early results from the Adolescent Brain Cognitive Development Study, or ABCD, study, were featured this past weekend on 60 Minutes, actually, and a major data release is scheduled for next year. The first wave of data showed physical changes to the brain among children who are heavy screen users, specifically, a premature thinning of the cortex, the outermost layer of brain tissue, which is linked to sensory processing, language, memory, and consciousness. The study thus far has also found that children who spend more than two hours per day on screens got lower score on thinking and language tests. The 60 Minutes report discussed smartphones and social media with psychologists, who posited possible links to loneliness, depression, and self-harm. The district recent technology moves have, of course, been aimed at helping to improve learning outcomes, but at the same time, we have all become increasingly alert to issues of social and emotional well-being. I would urge us all to stay on top of the developing science exploring the intersection of young people and screens, and try to ensure that we're providing the appropriate balance. So I should have said that before all the happy things.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
I think all of you know that I keep my phone on mute. I don't like to take phone calls, period, no matter who they're from, but I won't mention my wife's name. So it's, I apologize for the fact that my phone went off, and if any of you can tell me how to stop the unwanted ads from suddenly just talking to you, because that's what happened. So if there's any way that I can stop that from happening, you will be my savior. I apologize for it going off.
Anybody else? Public comment?
Hi, Bonnie Vertelli, Merritt Street. I just wanted to talk about the ECC, and thank you guys for bringing it to a vote, so you do give the public an opportunity to speak, because we're all very passionate. But I do have the same concerns that Ms. Maxum Canelli brought up about the feeder pattern, so I would, I'm happy to see that some of you addressed that and are supportive of exactly what she said before. Some of my other concerns, and I hope you take some time to take a look at when you go visit Stratfield, and I should tell you, for those of you that don't know me, I had a child with an IEP and a typical peer go through the ECC. I ran the parent group for a couple years, volunteered for SEPTA for nearly a decade, and I have worked at the ECC, and I am a Stratfield parent. So just some of my background, but my concerns are a couple things. Before you make a definitive decision, I'd like to know exactly where the OTPT speech services are going to be given. I know it seems like that, seems to be a problem we've identified, but you should know exactly where they're going to be to give some parents some answers, because I would not want my preschooler traveling upstairs to the fifth floor, the fifth grade wing of Stratfield to do OT or PT. Not to mention, the OTPT room at Stratfield is extremely small, and lacking proper equipment. I mean, I helped get them a grant to get even just basic OT supplies, but they don't have the swings or any of the preschool equipment that the ECC ward space has, and even if they did, it's not big enough. And they usually have multiple therapists working in that room at the same time. So that wouldn't even be able to happen in Stratfield. I don't even know where, like, where's the speech, where's the speech therapy going to go? They have collaborative services with social skills, motor They have collaborative services with social skills, motor planning. Where do those services happen? Where do those staff members have their offices? Like where's that going to happen? What else? If I had a kid receiving 30 minutes of service and 10 minutes was spent walking down the hallway, up the stairs, around the corner, I'd be upset that they weren't getting the 30 minutes of service, you know? The toilet situation, there needs to be appropriate sized, you know, three-year-old preschool toilet in every classroom. It's not like a typical preschool where, you know, you have a typical preschool program where the child has to be toilet-trained to enter. These kids coming in from birth to three, toileting is part of what the sped teacher is going to help them do. So those accommodations need to be in every single classroom. The access to the nurse, I was happy, was brought up because the nurse at the ECC is constantly running around. I know I'm, I know I'm going, but bear with me, I waited a really long time. The nurse at the ECC is running all over that building. The nurse at Stratfield, much like in elementary school, nurses will stay in their offices. They don't go visit classrooms like the ECC nurse does throughout the entire day. And the last thing is, I know you talked about keeping the CLCs at Ward, but if we're talking about having a continuation, a continuum of services and seamless transitions, we should really think about having a CLC classroom at Stratfield as well because oftentimes you might get a child coming in from birth to three who's been put in a sped classroom, and then they determine that the child needs a more restrictive environment, and if that's the case, they would be switched then to Ward to where they have a CLC instead of having one at the ECC as well. So just some thoughts for you guys to think of, but definitely go check out Stratfield if you can.
Did you have this written down?
I tried to write it down. But no, I mean, I'll, I will put it in an email to you guys, too.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Most of you, John?
I'm going to fight you for it.
Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxime Canelli, second. All in favor? Hey, it was, it was before 11:00.